So it being six o'clock or thereabouts, I call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021. And Sheri, could we have a roll call?
Yep. Chair Quilisi?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Commissioner Trent and Swift soon to join.
Okay, Commissioner Lottis, if you, it's, I think your name has come up, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Okay. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up is Public Communications. Ah, good evening, John. Good to see you.
Hello. How are you guys?
We're just getting some of the administrative details out of the way. We're up to Public Communications. And Sheri or Lucas, do we have any communications? Okay. Then we can move on to the consent item. The minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, February 17th. Any, any commissioner with add or change? Or deletion to those minutes? They look right to me. Then I entertain a motion to approve the minutes for February 17th.
I'll move for approval and, and I just wanted to compliment Sheri or whoever it is. I, I do appreciate the, the, there's a little bit more notation of what, what was covered with the commission.
Yeah.
I've noticed, I've noticed.
That's good. Yes, thank you, Sheri. Second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Very good. Any discussion? If not, Sheri, would you call a roll, please?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
And Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, next up is our discussion item number two. Title 10 Cleanup and Arada, specifically the land use tables. Lucas, would you take us through that, please?
Yeah, so, um, just to give you, just to give a little bit of background here. Um, as the commission will recall, we've been working on this Title 10 Cleanup and Arada for roughly, it's going on two years now, September 18th of 2019, is I think kind of when it, when it kicked off. Um, we've been going through various sections. This piece of information, this land use tables, um, is literally taking the table 2-2, 2-4, 2-6, and effectively merging those land use tables into one mega-table, if you will, uh, for ease of understanding and comprehension. And this is for the residential, for the commercial, industrial, and special district uses, um, that we're seeing here. Um, all within one table, and the uses themselves, the idea is to have those uses harmonious, um, throughout identifying those. With this use table, I don't know if you guys, if this commission received it in color or black and white, but the color piece is really, was it in color? Okay, good.
Yeah.
The color is supposed to be a representation to kind of help distinguish those different use, um, blocks. And you're seeing that within, um, within this land use table. Um, at least the merging of the tables. Uh, tonight, what I was hoping we could do is, is to kind of go through this table, uh, raise questions regarding how it's organized currently. If there's issues with how this has been merged, um, I think this is the, definitely the time to bring it up. Remember, we were talking about deeper dives in terms of how we're looking at, this is definitely a deeper dive. This is, this is definitely going down a rabbit hole. If there's questions, concerns, um, additional information that you want me to look into, this is where we're gonna really kind of, rubber's gonna hit the road in terms of looking at, um, making improvements, efficiency, that sort of thing. So for tonight, what I was hoping that we could do is to kind of go through this table from top to bottom. Not saying that we're gonna go through the whole thing tonight, because this is, this is a large apple for us to take bites off of. Uh, this land use table is really what I would call, call the foundation of how, um, the zoning code itself, uh, functions. You know, with each of the uses, whether they're conditionally permitted, permitted, or just outright not allowed. So with that, I, I really kind of opened it up for, for discussion tonight. This isn't meant for me to, to, to sit here and give a presentation and to walk through this uh, land use table, but certainly if, um, and I think we should, uh, if we want to go through each of the line items, or if you want to start with general questions, I'm okay with that, um, as well.
Okay. Um, and this is, this is for, uh, for John's benefit, since he wasn't part of the earlier discussion. And for Jake, when he arrives. One of the things that we found as we went through this, uh, trying to do a consolidation was that there was, there were a number of places where there were differences in nomenclature of a land use from one table to another. And I'm not sure that we all still agree on what a single nomenclature should be. Or if in fact, if you're talking about residential areas versus commercial and manufacturing versus special districts, perhaps there should be different land uses with different names. Depending on which set of zoning districts you're talking about. So you could, you could, for example, go back to tables 2-2, 2-4, and 2-6 in Title 10, Chapter 2, and, and compare those tables one at a time with the, um, dang it, where is it? Compare those with this consolidated table. And, and see if there are other things that ought to be done. We also have tried to consolidate, each, each of the land use tables had notes at the bottom that were sometimes unique to that table, sometimes common to two or three tables. And we tried to consolidate those as well, and then move the references into the consolidated table. But, um, beyond that, I did notice, uh, Lucas, that in addition to the yellow sort of orangish, I guess, sort of purplish and green, um, columns for those tables, that we have some dark red down in the, in the first column, the land use column. And I'm not sure what those are.
Yeah, so maybe that's where we'll start. Let's start there. So with each of these uses that are identified in the left-hand side, there are areas that have been highlighted red. And those areas are two uses that seem to be very similar. Like, for instance, if we're looking at the very top, we have apiary and beekeeping.
Yep.
Um, you're gonna see that with each of these reds. And I think what we're looking for here is, is it apiary, apiary, or is it beekeeping? One or the other, or is it both? Does it still, does it still make sense for it to be both? So I think that's the, that's the question that's being, that's being raised. So we could start there with apiary versus beekeeping.
Can I, um, I just have one question, Lucas. So yeah, I, I did wonder what the, the colors on that left-hand column were, so that's, that's great to clarify. But, um, so in, in terms of the uses themselves, have, have, do these, do this as formatted is, um, is that currently reflecting what's existing? Okay, so there's no changes, because I was kind of going nuts. I was like, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yeah, no, there's no changes. This is the clean, this is the clean version that we're looking at.
Okay.
Right. Um, Chair Quilisi?
Yes, please.
I have a similar question, and I, I was wondering if it's appropriate for us, and I kind of did my markups in the, what would we call the existing or the old table. Could we go through that again, because some of the things that are in there may come up for discussion or a change, and then ultimately would go into the new table. And then after we go through the, the old one or the existing one, could we go, then go into the new one, or is that counterproductive?
I, no, no, I think that's fine. I think what, what Lucas said, if I understand, is that the rows, that the rows and columns that you see in this draft consolidated table are strictly lifted from the three original tables.
Right. Um, so if, if we're okay with doing that, I was just gonna recommend that maybe we do one of two things that we've done in the past, when we've viewed a similar document, we've either person by person said, oh, what are your questions or changes or concerns? Or do we just go page by page and then let everybody make a comment if they had one? Um, but of course, I would leave that up to you, Chair Quilisi. I, I could go either way. I just thought I would, I knew it worked well in the past, so I just thought I'd bring it up.
To go, to go person by person?
Well, either person by person, or we just go, you know, attachment A.
Yeah.
There are any comments on, on page one, and we all, you know, yes or no?
Right.
Two, then we go to, through the whole document, or we go person by person, like we've done actually in most recently, we've been doing that. But I, I just wanted to make the recommendation, one or the other.
Well, I think maybe person by person would work. If, Lucas, you can keep track of, of which items have been covered, person by person, and there may be others that we want to come back to. Yes, Kathy Lottis?
Um, you know, I, um, I think with the use tables, I mean, my suggestion would be to go, um, page by page to keep, to maintain some cohesiveness to the discussion, because um, the, you know, the uses themselves, I, I mean, not only are we looking at the use itself and whether it's appropriate in all of the zones or any of the zones or some portion of the zones, but I, but I noticed also too, it's really nice to look at just the VMU zone. And, um, I mean, in comparison to the C1, for example, and just, uh, see how, how the uses relate and whether we're being, whether there seems to be a, a consistent rationale for the appropriation of uses among the different zones, so.
That's what, I agree. That's what I was looking at as well. Maybe start there, but.
To go page by page instead?
That, that would be my, uh, I mean, that would be my preference, my suggestion, but.
That's fine, that's fine with me. Um, there, there is, I, I missed, misstated it before, there is one addition to this draft table that is not in any of the three predecessor tables, and that is at the very top. Uh, ladies will remember that we also talked about having a type of permit that, for better or worse, I just called administrative use permit.
Yeah.
Which could be little, little or no cost, but require people to come into City Hall and at least ask about the rules. And I put that in at the very top, that is an addition to the table, but it is not referenced anywhere at the moment. And so one thing that we might think about as we go through these is where might that administrative use permit, or if we have a better name for it, than the new name, where that would be appropriate?
Right.
Okay, well, let's, let's start with, with, um, with the first page, and, and, uh, Lucas, you mentioned that first one, apiary versus beekeeping. Uh, I guess we could all drag a dictionary out, but I'm not sure what the difference is. Kathy Nolan?
Oh, well, maybe I misspoke. I was just wondering, well, maybe it's because I should have done it a different way, but I actually went through the existing code and made my comments. I didn't make them all on the new colored version.
Okay.
So is that, um, I, and I don't want to put a wrinkle in the whole process, but I, did anyone else do that, or am I the only person?
I started to do that, and then I switched over.
Okay, because I, I kept looking at the other one, but I thought, okay, I started this, I'll just finish it. Um, so anyway, like, once again, I don't want to put a wrinkle in the process, but I will say that, you know, I guess, maybe, well, I, I guess I could jump in when I need, maybe.
I think that's the way Lucas and I started. Is going through line by line of the three original tables, the three current tables, I should say.
Would it be possible to maybe do that quickly and then go to the new one?
Okay.
I don't see, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay, okay.
Like animal keeping is in 2-2, but I don't think it's in the others. What may be in 2-6? All right, well, go ahead.
Oh. I guess the question is, um, does anybody have a comment on attachment A1, page one of nine? Or two? I don't have a comment until I get to three.
Page three, I, I don't either.
All right.
Should, should I start on three?
Oh, page three of four in attachment B?
Attachment A, there's one, pages one through nine. So this, this is the existing table.
Existing tables, okay.
Not the new proposed.
All right.
Okay, I did have one on page two, but then I caught it in the new one, and that was the second residential unit changed to ADU, but I noticed Lucas already got that when I flipped to the new table, so check, check on that one. But on page, page three, I had a couple of questions that came up, and this is under land use. And the two are, they're right at the top of the chart, there's clothing and fabric products, and there's cosmetics and pharmaceuticals. And I noticed they're only permitted in the M1 and the MPD. But I, the reason I brought it up was, um, in the past, there actually was a small, what I would call more handcrafted clothing and/or handcrafted cosmetic uh, company, either in the C1 or the VMU.
We see it in the farmer's market every week.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking there was one on, in the VMU on Montgomery in the, um, Los Arboles complex. And it was there for quite a few years. I know they recently moved to Miners Oaks. But it was a handcrafted cosmetic line, and, and the owner actually lived upstairs. It was a live-work situation, but it was VMU. And then also I knew there was somebody who actually, yeah, maybe it's like one or two people that are producing, um, you know, fabric purses or like a clothing line. Now, I'm not talking about Louis Vuitton, and there's a thousand employees. But it's a small, maybe more home-scale, small-scale business that it seems like those should be allowed in the C1 and the VMU. No, I think it probably has to do with the scale of the business. And I, there was a couple other things where that came up as well, and when we get to the other pages, I'll mention that.
Yeah.
But I, I wanted to bring those up for discussion and see what everyone else thought.
I, I, I think that's a useful point to make.
Yeah.
Because the city allows, the, the city issues home, what do you call it, home business permits, Lucas?
Um, home occupation.
Home occupation permits, I, I think probably on a regular basis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but when you do that, do you, you check the land use table and tell people, no, you can't that, have that kind of a home occupation in the zone that you are residing in?
That's a piece to it. The other piece is to, you know, they give us a pretty detailed description. If they don't, we ask for a pretty detailed description in terms of what their use is, um, given the residential area, and then we, we also, um, I mean, there's a home occupation permit section of our code that we also check that against as well. So it's the use chart, it's the, um, it's the home occupation permit, um, section of the code, and then we're also double-checking the use itself. Typically, they tend to be, um, home office businesses that then end up doing all their services off-site, so. Pretty straightforward, I would say, probably 99% of the time.
Well, I, I do notice that, that all of these manufacturing and processing uses um, are not allowed in any residential zone or C1 or BP or VMU. And I think that's part of the point that Kathy Nolan was making.
Yeah, and then this page, I'm looking on to some list residential, but I.
The consolidated table does.
Yeah, the consolidated one does. Um, but I could definitely see both of those, um, and you know, maybe it gets broken out. I don't know, does pharmaceuticals need like a drugstore? Or is somebody manufacturing pharmaceuticals? So maybe it's more, or, or maybe what I'm talking about is let's not just retail, some people are actually creating the products and selling it on, on, let's just say, a smaller scale. But I know in the past, there has been some in the C1 and in the VMU, and it makes sense that they should be able to, you know, or a new business could come in and do that. To me, it makes sense.
That's part of what the VMU is there for.
Yeah, can I, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Um, so I just, I just went to the, to code to see if there was a definition for clothing and fabric products. And then to see if there's a definition for cosmetics and pharmaceuticals. And I didn't see one specifically, um, for either one of these. So when I'm looking at it, I'm thinking it must be erring on the side of it being a heavy manufacturing or a light manufacturing type of use, given that its context is allowed within the, within the M1 and MPD.
Where else, yeah.
Yeah, however, that's not confirmed through any sort of a definition, so.
Right.
One just assumes that that's, that's the way in which we're handling it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's being addressed. That's how I would look at it, if I was looking at the use chart and someone was asking if they could. Now, the question then, uh, that I would bring up is under retail, which is a permitted use, um, within like the C1 and VMU, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there a, a reference to clothing that would
Right.
that would check that box, right? So retail trade, is there some sort of accessory, oh, here we go, accessory retail uses?
Here we go, yeah. Um, yeah, so I'm referring to not just like selling an item, but actually like creating, whether you're sewing, you know, cutting and sewing and making the clothing.
That's why under manufacturing.
Getting the ingredients to make a small-scale cosmetic line and selling it.
Yeah.
Yeah, particularly, you know, high, I, I mean, that seems low to encourage or allow room.
Right.
Have an opportunity for that kind, the artisan making.
Yeah.
I think you really hit on an, an, an area of omission in the code, and I hadn't even thought of that, Kathy, but
Right.
I, I, I think a little bit later on, there are some things I was concerned about the scale of, because
It was targeted too.
There are lots of uses where it's an open-ended, the scale is just open-ended. Um, and, uh, when a use is permitted and the, the scope or the scale of the use is really just not defined or limited in any way, that's where I get a little bit concerned on some of these.
Right.
But I really like the idea of, um, thinking about ways to, um, like specifically articulate handcrafted or artisan making of, of.
There you go. And maybe it's a new category that we call.
Call it small-scale handcrafted or something along those lines.
And it could be kind of a broad category with definitions under it, but it's definitely appropriate for Ojai. Um, and, and then, and there has been precedents, you know, I can think of a couple businesses already that have been in commercial and even the village mixed use in the past that were actually doing that, so, um.
One, one thing that's kind of basic to, to all of this, I would say, is that it's, it's clear that not all of the land uses that are listed in that left-hand column are defined anywhere in the code. And, and we probably ought to get to that and add categories if we need to, like small-scale handmade, whatever. Um, and make sure that those things are defined in the code back in 1023602, the definition section. Um, and then, then we can decide perhaps with, with better information where to permit or conditionally permit or whatever each of these activities.
Right.
You know.
We can kind of get started, at least looking at the broad range of activities, maybe identify some new ones that ought to be in a consolidated table. And then we can, then we can probably at another time, because it, it would take longer than one meeting to come up with good definitions of the things in the land use column that aren't defined in the code.
Right. Um, just a follow-up question. I, I know we, we did, we did work on somewhat on definitions. And, um, so I know that we worked on that, but then I don't think, I don't think we have access to that, and so, um.
It was, I would, I would call it a high-level review. We didn't necessarily get into the meat of it. Um, we were kind of doing more of the Arada piece to that, and that was kind of the point.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, don't think that, don't think that we've, we've put that one to bed. That one's coming back for.
We, we went back through the definition section and kind of looked at some of the definitions and said, are they, are they right? Or is there something missing or whatever, but I don't think we've done it in depth yet.
No, I, I wouldn't say that that was in-depth at all. It wasn't meant to be.
Okay. I was, I was thinking that if you had any kind of a draft of what we, we had done, I was wishing that we could see that, but if we're gonna go back and work on it, that, that it's fine.
Yeah.
I have one more on that page. So structural clay and pottery products. And in a way, this might be one of those things with the definition too. It's like, am I making, am I manufacturing blocks of clay and glazes? Or do I have clay and glazes and a wheel, and I'm creating things on site and selling it, like we used to have the, um, what is it, the Maserella Pottery, which was in the old firehouse building on Montgomery, which is now a winery, and that, they were there for years. And so once again, in this, it's not shown in the C1 or the VMU, but I may be, um, looking at the definition a little bit differently. But when it does come to something like the arts and crafts and ceramics and people, you know, producing the products and selling them in Ojai, that's definitely a popular and something that would potentially be here.
Maybe.
Or so, or so than making, you know, manufacturing clay blocks that weigh 100 pounds and five-gallon vat, or things of glaze.
Well, I was just noticing, you know, recently, we had, uh, the RTK people in with, with an ask for consolidating two lots. And I just started looking at this page three here, looking for, where does it say tile anywhere? And I don't.
So they might even fall under that category right there, and they're in the VMU.
And they're in the VMU.
Right.
And, and I'm sure that what they're doing is entirely appropriate to the VMU, but I'm not sure where it's legal in the code.
But right here, it says it's not even permitted in the VMU.
Correct.
But maybe it was grandfathered in.
Well, no, not necessarily. It is grand, it, it is grandfathered in in terms of the use, but when they did an expansion to that use, that's where the conditional use permit came in.
That's right.
An expansion of the non-conforming use.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was actually not necessarily covered within this use chart, but covered within the CUP section of our code.
Right, right, okay.
Well.
Also, it should say CUP if, if nothing else, then correct on, on the VMU?
No, not necessarily, because remember, it was a non-conforming use, so the CUP allowed for it with a specific finding by the commission and, and then, um, council as well.
Okay, thank you.
CUP is kind of a wild card. You don't have to go strictly by the table.
Okay.
But, but. But but I think. Perhaps what we can do, if if you recall, when we were going back through the definition section. There, there was one definition of retail trade, which probably took up half a page. Back in the definitions at the end of title or of chapter two. That talked about all of the things that could be a part of retail trade. Maybe we could, maybe we could do a category of. Small scale or arts and crafts. Small comma, small scale, comma, handmade. Et cetera, I I don't know exactly what the words are, but then we could use that as as the same sort of. Catch-all category. For all of these things that we use retail trade as a catch-all.
You know, um in that, in the uh current table, we do have something called Handicraft or Handcraft Industries.
Small scale manufacturing.
Maybe that's where they fall.
Add and build on the definition.
Yeah, that would, that's basically it, yeah. So maybe these other things are. You know, although they do need to be further defined, just for clarity, but maybe they're just referring to like a large scale invest there in. The manufacturing zone.
Yeah, I mean, structural clay and pottery product is is a defined term within um. Article thirty-six. Just kind of interesting.
So is Handcraft Industries Small Scale Manufacturing.
Oh, is it?
It uh says establishments. Manufacturing and or assembling small products primarily by hand, including jewelry, pottery and other ceramics. As well as small glass and metal art and craft products. We could probably expand that to include clothing and and um cosmetics. And uh where where do you put soap?
In the C, so the C one and the VMU should basically have, it should be permitted there. Or at least it makes sense.
I I agree.
Okay, hold, hold on, want to make sure that, so I'm taking some notes here. We're jumping around, the the structural clay and pottery products. Clothing and father fa- fabric products and cosmetic and pharmaceutical. We're talking about those now, are we talking about those potentially having an impact within the C one and VMU?
Yes, yeah.
A permitted use as a CUP? MCP?
Well, clothing and fabric and cosmetics and pharmaceuticals. And I haven't looked up those definitions back in thirty-six oh two, Lucas.
Yeah, they're not, they don't necessarily have a definition, cosmetics and pharmaceuticals, I didn't see a definition there either.
If that refers to small scale or to large scale. Manufacturing, processing, whatever. We should clarify that in the definition, and we should include those same things back under. Handmade, Handcraft Industries. Broaden that definition. If if we're talking about clothing and fabric products. And cosmetics and pharmaceuticals as large-scale manufacturing, I think it. I think it's appropriate to M one and MPD, but not necessarily to VMU, but the other would be. The Handcraft Industries might be appropriate to residential zones, for that matter, if you've got a little home occupation.
Right, if you have the the. You know, the facilities and or the area to do something that won't impact your neighbors. I'd be, I'd be leaning towards thinking that's a good idea.
Yeah, if you have a closet and a sewing machine, you can do clothing.
But don't take over your garage.
There, well, there you go, you are exactly correct. That's usually when I, that's why spider sense starts getting. Exactly, alright, so it sounds like clothing and fabric products, definition and. Within the C one. Uh we're talking about. As a definition, so the definition will tease out how it's addressed, correct? The definition becomes extremely important for these types of uses.
Unless unless you want to take those that clothing, the clothing category, the cosmetics and pharmaceuticals category. And incorporate them under Handcraft, then you could say, do that fine in the VMU. And the others, if they're large scale, keep it in the manufacturing zone.
I think it also depends on if it's something that's regulated, like pharmaceuticals, that's probably more of a manufactured item. And I just was thinking even like with the cosmetics, yes, you could do some natural cosmetics that. Don't necessarily fall under the same regulations, maybe it's something like body products or. You know, when you're mixing oils and putting a natural color in it and you make lipstick or something. Or a body oil blend or.
It's it's creating a noxious odor.
So I think you, if there, there definitely are regulations for that, and and that would define something was. In the M one and you have to have, you know, filtration systems and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, where. In the handcrafted, it wouldn't, it would be something different than that. But I even looked down below it, like textiles and leather products. I'm, I mean, that for sure could be in manufacturing, if it's this big full-on, you've got. You know, major dyes, but it could be something that's a handcrafted one as well, that could be in the commercial, the VMU and or residential.
Right, as long as you're not tanning the leather, so something.
Yeah, I think it depends on like, you know, what you're doing, the scale and the. The oversight required or regulations and.
Maybe um something like this. I mean, we could talk about an A AUP for something like these, at least in some of the zones, I. You know, maybe if we're moving into the residential as part of this, but um. The commercial would probably, I'd be okay with permitted and. Maybe even the VMU, or maybe the AUP would be good for that in the VMU zone.
Just take an example, Lucas, if someone came to you and said, I want a home occupation permit. And I want to make soap in my den. But what do you do? You take it to the commission and say, this is, this is not a permitted use, so it requires a CUP?
Yeah, I mean, I'd look at the use chart first, I mean, that's, that's where we go first, and then I'd, I'd be looking at the home occupation permit. Um standards and and provisions, there's exceptions and. And prohibited portions within there that live within that, so I would look there as well. In terms of soap, soap's an interesting one because. I know there are individuals right now, not necessarily in this city. That have received home occupation permits to make soap from their, from their home, and it ends up being some sort of a um. Shoot, there's a phrase for it, a cottage good or something like that. So it could very well fit within that category because it is being that you're, it's kind of light touch materials that you're merging together.
That's a little broader category than handmade. So I still, maybe cottage industry would be a better category. That we could list a bunch of different things under. And then allow it in VMU and and. Maybe even in the residential zones, depending on, you said, Kathy Nolan, you said C one. That's the the retail corridor, basically.
Yeah, and I want to be careful with that phrase because I know it's very specific to residential uses, I'm okay with. I would be okay with um teasing out a similar phrase that would be more appropriate. Something like that, I, yeah, we've kind of got something right now that.
Kind of to differentiate between the two.
But the cottage industry, the cottage goods could be a subset of a larger. A larger term you're saying.
Could be, I mean, we could define it to help differentiate what what it is in the residential zones versus what it is in.
The state, I mean, the state law does define those, the cottage industry stuff, so we'd have to. We'd have to check that, or you probably know it better than.
I, I don't know it by heart, but I I do know that it exists. So we, but I can bring that back for a later discussion to see what that definition is. Walk through um how we can create some different. Maybe a different definition or slightly different definition, so it's not under that same category.
And we could textiles, sounds to me, that's a lot like. What you use to make clothing or other things. Uh leather products, if it excluded tanning operations. Then it would, in my, my thinking, would be appropriate to a lot more places. People making belts or purses or who knows what.
Yeah, I think it's down to the definition, it's like, are you bringing in raw hides and you're, you've got the vats of, you know, tanning and. And it's, you know, more regulated, so to speak. Um and the same thing even with textiles, are you actually creating a textile and? Batiking or, you know, I caught printing or something, you know. Yeah, which is more a handcrafted.
You're buying white T-shirts and making tie-dyed T-shirts out of them.
So in terms of what we're talking about with those, with those pieces, I just want to tease out some of that information, so. If you're doing tie-dying, like, think of the material and think of the product that you're using, is it? Is it something that is um potentially harmful to the environment, does it create an odor? Is there a lot of noise that's generated from that? Those are all the things that that whenever I'm looking at, like since it's a home occupation permit. I'm asking those very specific questions, is it creating some sort of a potential nuisance?
That's, and I think I'm thinking about that as well.
Yeah, absolutely, okay, good.
And now you have, you have also, since one of these categories includes pharmaceuticals. That's where you'd put uh the old, what do they call it, the elemental apothecary? Is that the business?
That would fall under probably this handcrafted thing where you're. You know, you're mixing some essential oils and you're making like a body blend. Or you may be adding a natural beet juice to make a color for a lipstick. As as opposed to like pharmaceuticals, I would think of are more like drugs. Which are regulated in a whole different manner. So I, I think it kind of the 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 apothecary you were referring to, maybe that.
Pudders or something potentially as well. I'm not sure where you cross the line into. From, from just stuff into over-the-counter pharmaceuticals, which are by and large not regulated.
Yeah, it might be like unregulated. And maybe there's, there is a little checklist with the ingredients and what have you. In other words, you don't have to call in the FDA to get. Certified and OSHA checked and, you know, that you're following your. Filtration system is good.
Let's, let's, let's help, let's help Lucas here some more with. With suggestions, I mean, we can come back at a later time and say. Any given thing, where do we think is an appropriate zone for it? But I think we probably need to start with getting the right definitions of land uses that we can all talk about. Uh John, you you have been quiet so far, did you see anything in? Table two-two, that is, attachment A, page two, that struck you as as strange?
You know, I have not, um and I haven't really had time to dig through the documents, but. Um I haven't seen anything that was strange or out of the ordinary.
This is, this is a multi-meeting process for sure.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, obviously, there's a lot of stuff and. A lot of different ways to uh to define things and to slice and dice information and to uh. Put descriptions on things and um. You know, so yeah, this, this could take a while.
I have more on the next page.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, so, and I thought we had done this and somehow. I don't see it being reflected, so if you go to the top of the page, land use for recreation, education and public assembly uses. The studio art, dance, martial arts, et cetera. Uh in in the M one zone, it's listed as a CUP. And I don't know, maybe that still stays there, and I, I, Lucas, maybe you can just answer this. They're, they're in the past, I'm not even sure if they're still there, I know there was like a gym and there was a um. A dance studio and a yoga studio all in the M one.
I think we added yoga to that definition of studio.
But they would still need a CUP to be there, is that correct? It's not like a permitted.
M one and MPD.
Okay, so, alright, well, I'll skip that down to the next item then, that answered my question there. Um, the next one was the theater auditorium. And I thought in one of our past workshops, we had said, oh, it should, we should have it in the C one. We have, for 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 instance, we have a theater that hasn't been open for years, but it is in the commercial zone. And there was another theater um on Ojai Avenue closer to Bryant Street. That was there for years, and there was a theater on um. Matilah, where the old funeral home used to be, and now it's vegan, so there's a. It just seems to me like it should be permitted in the commercial zone.
I would agree. We have, we have the landmarked Chaparral Auditorium. That's PL zone.
That's in PL, yeah.
But it is, it is right in the commercial corridor.
Yeah, so I I was suggesting that we add that it would be permitted in the C one.
I think that's a good observation.
Yeah, then if we go down to the next category of residential uses, right about in the middle, it says live-work unit. And we have it as permitted in the VMU. Um, and this is more, I'm, I guess I'm throwing this out to the commission and staff. And I know, well, I've been on the commission for a while. Quite a few years, and I know there's been projects or proposed projects that have come before us, and maybe they didn't pan out or they didn't go anywhere. But generally. Myself, my fellow commissioners, but yeah, doesn't it make sense to have the live-work opportunity in the commercial zone? It supports reducing your vehicle miles traveled, number one, which is huge. For climate and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, just the convenience of it, and then there's also um. I know, it just, to me, it just makes sense, it doesn't mean you have to, but if you have the ability. On a building to separate out a little, a small living quarter, similar to a VMU. You should, it feels like you just should be able to do it, it just, it makes sense to me, it also um. You know, may maybe the difference of a business or somebody staying in Ojai. And keeping a business here, which we want, we don't want people to go elsewhere, which they often do. You know, it could be the determining factor. Um, so I I'm proposing that we add it as a permitted item in the C one.
I mean, I would even consider the BP because.
Write that too.
Look where the BP zone is actually located. It it it's almost like it could be a C one zone because it's on the main, the main Ojai Avenue, basically.
That's where, that's where the Old World University, that's. Oh, they want to make that BP.
Okay, well.
But certainly, live-work. Seems like Kathy Nolan will remember, I think we were, we're the only two that were around when the case came up. Three or four years ago, somebody wanted to do a development. On the southeast corner of Ojai Avenue and Bald, across the street from Sea Fresh. They wanted to put residential and retail and office all in a single building. Two-story building. It looked to me, and I thought most of the commission, like a fine idea, they came in with a concept review. Realized that it would take a zoning change or. But realized that it would take a zoning change or perhaps several variances or something. I'm not sure.
Right. And then largely lots, yeah, the lots are larger. And I was also, Steve, I'm not sure you were on the commission, but there's a lot. Um, I believe it's still the same old owner, the Miller property. It's a vacant building that's been sitting there forever. It's on the east side of the skate park on the north side of Ohio Avenue.
Right, yes, Cinder block building.
That had come to the commission also as a live work concept. And everybody, you know, everybody goes, oh, that's great. You know, they didn't follow through with it, but it's a big, it's a deep lot. Um, number one, but it just to me makes sense to have that be a permitted use. So that's why I brought that one up.
I think many of us, if we look far enough back in the family tree, are going to find somebody from the east coast. Who lived above the hardware store or the plumbing store or whatever. And it always seemed like a natural sort of thing to have. Um, so I would, I would favor at least putting that live work u- unit into C one. I'm not sure, uh, where else, where else?
Is the B P?
Where where are the B P areas now? Because I I think schools and hospitals and churches are all P L at the moment.
It's mainly.
Where's B P?
B P is on uh Ohio Avenue. So like where some of the dentist's offices are and where Suzanne's and um the Soma Center. And then and then um across from uh, or Lucas, you you should explain on me.
Yeah, and and not only that, but there's a, it's also on Maricopa Highway. I'm looking at the the zoning map right now.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I just have the land use in mind. I didn't have the zoning.
Yeah, that's north, north side of Maricopa Highway where there are medical offices and stuff like that.
Absolutely.
Right, so I I would be amenable to um considering it for that zone as well. But um, and Lucas, I do, I do have a question. So so. Can't remember exactly, but I think we, you were here, uh but we'd had discussions on the use tables prior to you coming here. Is that, is that right? Kind of split. Um, so are those previous conversations? Um, yeah, the problem is the only way to go back and look at that is to go to the tape.
Yeah, I I do have, I do have the notes from from those previous. I didn't provide that here because I kind of wanted to start with a with a fresh start since we have two new commissioners.
Okay.
But.
That's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah, definitely, as we, as we go through this, I'll be incorporating those to say, hey, these were some of the comments that we had seen.
Okay.
From previous, um, but for tonight, I wanted to start fresh.
Okay.
Uh, and not necessarily go to what someone had said um over a year ago.
Yeah, no, that's helped, that I.
Yeah, I don't know. You're absolutely right. This this has been before the commission um before.
But it's been a little disjointed and um and and lots of lots of time in between, so I totally forget.
It's been a lot, a lot of time.
Of discussions and what I think may have been decided on, but we do have a new commission now. So uh, yeah, I'm fine with kind of, you know, starting back at the beginning.
But not to forget, I still don't want to forget what those comments were. It's not that they are being swept under the rug.
Oh, thank you.
I have a couple more on that same page.
This is page four?
Yeah, this is page four and then even one on page five that maybe kind of ties into it as well. Um, and in a way, this kind of, I guess, could go almost go back into that, the um, what was our word? Uh, hand, what do we call it? Handcrafted industries or um something similar. But what about a bakery, retail, and the candy confectionery shop? In in other words, this is like more the handcrafted, small, could that be in the V M E permitted in the V M U instead of a C U P? It's kind of a hybrid between, you know, in other words, if you lived, if you're in the V M U, you may already have, you know, as kind of a separate living quarters. A storefront or it could just be a house in the V M U.
And and that those those items, I think they might fit very well into the cottage.
Yeah.
Cottage industry uh regulations.
Well, there's the residential, yes, but then could it also be permitted in the V M U? And it seems to me rather than a C U P.
Yeah.
And then on the next page, um, I even thought even like a, now I don't want to pick this whole thing apart, but I just keep thinking about. The so many people who have these small businesses, these kind of handcrafted cottage industry businesses in Ojai. It's very appropriate and makes sense, but the other one was even the stationary store, if it was a small. Custom, I I guess maybe that could even fall into retail and maybe I let that one go.
Oh.
But that could be in V M U as well.
Where I.
Which was that again, please?
This would be on page five, under the land use. There's a stationary store about three quarters.
I don't know why a stationary store would require a C U P. I I.
Yeah.
I certainly.
Right, I can think of um.
That's pretty quiet.
Whoa, give us all a shock there.
Yeah, so to me, that should be a per- could easily be permitted in the V M U.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Um, but these, these, again, these are, remember, all under the category of retail trade. So I think of a stationary store as a place that sells stationary. It doesn't make any.
Well, somebody could make it.
And making it maybe belongs in that, in one of those other lines under manufacturing and processing. So again, if we take that catch-all category of either handmade or cottage industry or something and include all of these things in it.
That's exactly where I was coming from. Yeah.
Great, great.
Yeah, in agreement.
File an agreement.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I have down the same page, page five. Uh, this may just be a kind of a question to start. Under services, it says auto repair and maintenance. Major auto repair and maintenance minor. And I'm assuming like a minor would be would be repair that was ancillary to some other business. Or um whereas major, that would be the main thing that they did was auto repair. And I know we have, um, we do have an auto repair on Ohio Avenue in the commercial zone. And there used to be a Ford dealer where Topam Mountain Winery is, they have soul cars, but.
The Boku is, yeah.
Take my Ford there and get it serviced.
Yeah.
So um, I'm guessing they, you know. They must have, in other words, right now, I'm thinking of the one place that's there on Ohio Avenue, right before you get to Shady Lane. Uh, I'm guessing they must have had a C U P, but it, but that is the major focus is auto repair and maintenance. And it is.
I thought I heard they were closing.
Well, they're still open, I think. I don't think they've closed yet, but they've been there for years.
No, they're not closing. They're they're under new ownership, though.
Oh, they are, okay. So I was just curious, um, does that need to say that a permit is okay for? The major, and right now, there's just a blank line, like it's not allowed.
Are you on page, are you on page four of nine? I just want to make sure.
I'm at the end, page five of nine, and I'm at the bottom of page five where it says services. And there's two items. There's auto repair and maintenance major and auto repair and maintenance minor. Like I said, major to me would mean that's their primary focus is repair and maintenance, where minor might be the repair is secondary.
Yeah, the the uh, the definition section thirty-six oh two.
And you'd open that up.
It actually has definitions of major repair slash bodywork and minor maintenance slash repair. Which I think are pretty clear.
Hmm.
And uh, the major says dealing with entire vehicles, provide towing, collision repair, other bodywork and painting services.
Hmm.
Entire recapping, which is both smelly and noisy, I think.
Yeah, that's that's definitely a, an M one.
That, so those at least seem consistent to me with with the. Well, I'm not sure why they requ- require a C U P over the M one zone.
Yeah, it just seemed like it was not maybe congruent or, and I can think there's another um auto repair. And I believe that's P M U um over on um, shoot, what is that? Not Ventura Street and Elisa, somewhere right over in that neck of the woods. And I was just curious, like.
Oh, oh, it's on, it's on uh, it's on Signal and Oak.
Yeah, Hinks Auto.
There's a garage in there and it's, I guess that's probably the north end of the V M U.
Yeah, so I was just curious because I see like, you know, there's nothing listed for the V M U for the minor or the major. Um, and then there's no commercial listed for major. So I was just curious, like, what are we doing or do we need to define this?
But ke- keep in mind also that, I mean, when I'm looking at the use tables, I'm looking, I I try to look ahead in terms of what we would. Want to want to see in the future or how things might evolve, but if something exists.
Right.
That doesn't necessarily mean that we have to um accommodate the use table just for that one single.
No, I bagged throughout three different ones um and yeah, and I guess the other thing is even a C uh, a C U P even to have it in the manufacturing zone.
Well, auto repair is pretty noisy. They use compressors and there's a lot of.
That's true.
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's definitely noise and odor that goes along with that. And not only that, but think about the, think about the uses that are like Lottis is just saying. Think about the uses that are already in the V M U. Those can remain. And if there are expansions that are done to those within the V M U, falls into the same category that we.
Okay.
That we handled with um R T K Studios where it's a C U P. This commission would have an opportunity to look at that expansion, what that expansion looks like. Um, a change in ownership wouldn't necessarily, that wouldn't go to any sort of body, but when we're looking at at expansion or changes. That that would certainly be something that could fall within the C U P category.
Okay.
Within the V M U, though, that's within the V M U, not within the C one.
Oh.
Because I know I'm seeing a a line or a dash with auto repair and maintenance major in the C one. But in terms of the V M, in terms of the V M U, it would be a, it would be a C U P if they're looking to do expansions and non-conforming.
Okay, all right, so it's kind of a case by case.
Yeah.
Um, you know, whether it's, whether it's a new proposed one or an existing one, it sounds like.
Well.
You know, kind of.
That's what a C U P is designed for, is a case by case investigation. Um, I I wouldn't mind in the minor category to have the A U P there.
Yeah.
Force people to come into City Hall and say, this is what I'm going to do and let Lucas tell them that's fine. These other things are things you can't do under this permit or in this zone.
Yeah.
I think we need to make sure that we're defining what that administrative use permit looks like. Have we? We have gone down that category. You're putting, you're putting, I don't mind stuffing on my shoulders, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're clear with what that is.
We need to know what it is.
I think we started that with with fences and walls, actually.
Hmm.
Uh, to make sure that people knew the rules and didn't just tell a contractor, this is, I want a ten-foot wall around. All four sides of my property and not know that that wasn't allowed.
Right, right.
Yeah, if we if we come up with a new permit, it'll have to be adopt, I mean, we'll have to decide how much we're going to charge as a fee for the permit. Um, well, that that might be a staff decision, but because it's, uh, you can't charge a fee more than uh what it costs staff to process the permit.
Sure.
And so um it'll probably be likely to be an ordinance adopted by council, so.
Right.
Well, it it would wind up at some point on the the city's master fee schedule, which only the council controls.
Correct, but even including and adopting a new administrative uh administrative use permit was likely an ordinance um.
Yeah.
From council.
Would be, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and and I would ju- my my feeling about it, the C one zone, I think we have to be careful um to keep our C one zones. Um, well, you know, our 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 zoning code says community and tourist-serving retail and service land uses. General retail, personal services, hotels, motels. I eh, anyway, I I'm a, I'm a little cautious about.
Yeah.
Uh allowing auto repair in any form as permitted, so.
Yeah, yeah, I I think I just kind of needed clarity on it and, you know, based on like what's existing and uh, you know, what's going to happen and.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I had one other item on this page, so this is page five of nine, attachment A. But I did notice when I looked in the the new uh chart. That Lucas covered that and that was going to be restaurant, cafe and outdoor dining, so I'll wait till we get to those, the new one.
Legendary outdoor dining, yes.
Yeah, he broke it out, so that was, that was.
Just so you know, I I did that, but I know that that's that's its own separate meeting, so I don't necessarily want to go down that.
Yeah.
We really do need to have.
And you said we would do that, that would be its own.
I I am holding true to that because I know that that is a, that's a, that will be a a a great, a great discussion.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, should I keep going? Because I have on page six, I have a couple of items.
Please do.
Okay.
If anybody else has any any comments on this as well, if we're going page by page here, please jump in.
Yeah, if anyone has them, just, I mean, I'm happy to say something, but I'm happy to wait and not and share the time.
Um, a quick question. I I don't recall, Lucas, is there any part of the V M U south of Ohio Avenue?
Yes, there's V M U south of Ohio Avenue.
Montgomery Street, part of Montgomery.
Oh, Montgomery, okay.
Um.
I wasn't sure. There there's a car wash on on Fox Street, I think it is.
Yeah, it goes.
I've been there a long time, so it'd be grandfathered, but is that V M U there?
South of, south of Ohio, where what what's cross streets?
Holden Fox.
The cross street is Topa Topa.
I mean, the color looks like it's V M U.
Next door to the project that we had a couple meetings.
Right, right.
Yeah, it looks like it's V M U.
It's a car wash, yes. That's the V M U. It's on the edge of V M U and um C one.
Yeah.
But C C one kind of cuts a swath through the V M U then. Is that right or is?
No.
Can can you tell? I I look at the zoning map and it's a little hard for me to interpret. Are there parcels where both C one and V M U regulations both uh apply? Or are those disjointed?
Not sure I follow that question. You're you're asking.
Well, you said the car wash was V M U.
Hmm.
Okay, north of the car wash is C one.
Yes.
Nor and before you get to Ohio Avenue even.
Yes.
And then there's more V M U a block or two north of Ohio Avenue.
Yes.
Is that, is that car wash V M U uh part of a contiguous zone that includes stuff up on Matilah? Or is it an isolated parcel?
It's an, it is an isolated lot, meaning it's um, it's owned by one individual. Where at one point it was owned by more than one.
But it doesn't, it doesn't touch any other V M U parcels.
Yes, it does.
It does, to the east and to the south and to the west.
Yeah.
Not to the north.
Do you have the um?
Where, where the residences are?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you have your map in your packet, um, it's the pink colored um parcels. That happened to be the V M U and then the commercial, I believe, is the red along Ohio Avenue in Maricopa.
Kind of heavy red.
Yes.
So the V M U isn't all one contiguous zone.
It is not.
No.
It's here and there.
Yeah, yeah.
It is.
Okay. That adds to the confusion. Oh, and and then that same color applies all the way down Bald and Pearl. And all the way over, actually across Bryant Avenue, across Fulton and across Bryant. It looks like it's all V M U.
Well, Bryant is actually.
No, that's a lighter pink.
It is.
Okay, that's the M one and M P D, okay.
Correct.
So Fulton define divides V M U from M one, say.
Yeah, that would be the dividing line.
Except there's one little parcel.
There is, I I'm seeing two lots, it looks like. So I'm I'm meeting. So I'm, I'm eating my words right now. I'm hearing that now.
Speaking, and that is correct.
Yeah, yeah. But there's probably will help to color code it.
So the block of VMU is uh, Matilahaw and that area and the block, there's another block that's south of Ojai Avenue. Is that south? What is that?
Yeah.
South.
That would be south. It's kind of sprinkled throughout. I mean, it has, it definitely has its, its um, pockets, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then it has some bigger areas with the, with the VMU.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
That, uh, that auto repair facility that Kathy Nolan was talking about is on Oak just east of Signal.
Yeah, in the VMU.
It's in the VMU.
Yeah, I thought it was, yeah.
Yeah.
Did I mention the other ones on page six, or did anyone else want to go? I don't want to.
Go.
Jump ahead, okay. Um, so this was another question. This is on page six, um, of nine, attachment A. Uh, under land use, right about in the middle, it says offices, real estate. And there's nothing, you know, it's got a blank or dash under VMU. But could that be? Um. Could a Realtor have an office in the VMU?
Not according to this, right?
Not according to this.
Yes, but for discussion.
Yeah. Now, that's a, that's a home business and I, I remember.
Yeah.
We, when we had a townhouse in Redondo, looking at, at home occupations, because I was doing consulting. Um, the rule was if you have a business there, but clients do not come to your home.
Right.
For transactions, then you can have that business in a residential zone.
Right.
Um, and I think a, a philosophy of that sort would probably be useful here.
Right.
Uh, but, but some of these others, like you're talking about, a real estate office. Um, you wouldn't want that in a residential zone, I don't think.
But I was referring to.
Not all that different from all this, the rest of the stuff that's in the VMU.
Yeah, I was referring to VMU, um.
I'd, I'd be in favor of putting a P in for VMU on that one.
Yeah.
Cause it's there for offices, business, administrative and.
Right.
Yeah, they separated it out.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like just for the VMU.
Right.
Right, that was the only one that got exclude, well, maybe intentionally, but I'm not sure what the intention was. So.
I'd be willing to think about it, um.
We could put a question mark, maybe.
Yeah.
The other one I had a question on. And I thi- I'm pretty sure, maybe when we first started doing this, we brought this up. Um, and that is, um, the same page, page six of nine, attachment A. Uh, the last item under the land use is the veterinarians and the animal hospitals. Um, I know there is one in the commercial zone. And I'm guessing, did they have to have a CUP to, to be there?
This is the West Ojai Avenue just past Topa Topa.
Yeah.
Is that? Look at, look at your zoning map. Is that C1 or is that VMU? Or is it BP?
I think it's C1.
BP.
But C1, it's right on Ojai Avenue there. I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay.
All red there.
Yeah.
But I was just curious, um. Then, you know. I mean, I think it has to do with, you know. Actually, you know what? I do remember this one, that, that, when that veterinary opened up. You know, all the questions came up. They, they came to planning commission to get the permit. It was this whole thing about the sound and neighbors were concerned and.
The kennel boarding.
The boarding.
And it's all boarded and it's quiet, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, I'm guessing they got a conditional use permit, although it does say that it's not allowed and I. I'm just bringing it up for discussion because there it is and.
Mm-hmm.
They just, you know, opened that business sometime, I want to say in the last. I don't know, six years, maybe? I'm kind of guessing on that. I could be wrong. If it's more or less than that, but. It's while I've been on the planning commission, for sure.
Well, um, just for, for reference purposes, I'll look into that one.
Okay.
See how, see what a process it went through.
Yeah.
And maybe we could split that out into veterinarians and animal hospitals as one category.
Yeah.
Veterinarians, kennels and boarding as a separate category, more tightly regulated because of the noise.
Yeah. Yeah, I was kind of thinking along those lines too, Steve, of. Do they need to be separated or, you know, how to handle that one? The question came up.
But it certainly, it exists in the, in the commercial zone. I, I can't imagine that anyone would object to a veterinarian, say in that work-live space. At Ventura and Matilahaw. You know, there's a whole bunch of things there on the northwest corner.
Right.
If, if one of them was a veterinarian.
Right.
Lived above the shop, as long as it wasn't kennels and boarding.
Exactly.
Lot of noise, probably nobody would care.
And they make it soundproof inside. They do, you know, extra insulation and. We've never had, or I've never heard anyone complaining about the one, uh, I can't think of the name of the, the veterinary service, but the one on West Ojai Avenue.
No.
I don't think there's been a, an issue at all.
I think the traffic makes more noise there.
I think you're right.
Yeah, but the only, but the only thing is, uh, I mean, I, I agree with you, Steve, but if we have a definition that allows kennels and boarding. For, with, if it, if there's a veterinary use, there's no way to, to, um, regulate it or stop it.
No, I, I agree.
Oh, you're mute.
Yeah, he's been muted.
Oh.
Can anybody hear him?
It's, I can hear him, but it's really quiet. Steve, uh, did something happen with your volume or are you muted? I don't see the mute symbol and I could hear him a little bit.
Right, there's no. Ken.
Yeah.
He's still.
That's.
Steve, he can't hear you.
I know it's, I, I know it's.
I think he can hear us. Oh, he's pointing, yeah.
I don't know if he touches his microphone.
Something like that happens, you're not even touching your computer and you go, I didn't do.
Hey, just, just so you know, there is a definition actually within a definism section, the.
Okay.
Article, let me read it for you here real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's veterinarians, animal hospitals, kennels, boarding, and the definition goes as follows. Office. And indoor medical treatment facilities used by veterinarians, including large and small animal. Veterinary clinics and animal hospitals. Kennels and boarding operations are commercial facilities. Where they're keeping, boarding, or maintaining of, oh, that's interesting, of five or more dogs. Four months of age or older, or five or more cats, except for dogs or cats. In pet stores, or pet shops is what they're calling them.
Yeah.
Very specific.
Yeah, that is very specific.
I mean, that's kind of where I draw the line in term, uh, permitted, permitted veterinarian use, um, in C1, fine, but I would exclude. I, somehow I would want to exclude the boarding unless it's a CUP.
Okay, so you're talking about.
Yeah.
Separating the two.
Possibly.
That's what Steve had.
That's what I've got down here.
Oh, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, he was saying separate them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Still mute, I think his mic might be off.
Oh, no sound, yeah.
Yeah, we ca- we still can't hear you, Steve.
Ah, sorry.
Well, maybe he can call in. Steve, can you call in? I had to do that one night. I don't know what happened. My, my commuter just went. And I went onto my desktop, which doesn't have a camera, so I watched it, but I dialed in and it was fine and I could just talk and. Hear everybody. At least there's a plan B.
Yeah.
Available, right?
Technology is great, except when it.
Yeah.
I was calling him.
He's calling in.
Maybe staff could send him, uh, in a chat, the call-in number if he doesn't have it.
Oh, let me pull up the call-in number. I've got it here. Oh, that's funny. I only have the link. I don't have the phone, I don't have the phone number here. Wait a minute.
Oh.
Sherry, are you on?
I am, I'm talking to James Hahn on the phone to see.
Okay, yeah, cause I don't see the phone number here.
I don't know what he.
I did use the phone number. This was months ago when we. We were doing the Zoom meetings and I had an issue with my sound.
James.
Something went out of mine and I ended up calling.
James is going to email Chair Qualisi the phone number to call in.
Perfect. All right. Um. While we're waiting for that, we can continue. I mean, he can hear us, um.
Okay.
He's, he's.
Okay, I'm done. I think I've, I've said enough.
You're very thorough, Kathy. I, um, let's see, I don't know if I. I think the only, oh, I, I didn't know what a residential care home, do we define that? Let's see, I didn't have time to look at it, anyway.
I'll look it up real quick.
Is that, is that, is that something like the Gables? I mean, it was more a question of what it means rather than any.
All right, residential care homes?
It's called residential care home.
That is a defined term in article thirty.
Four of nine.
Apartment.
It's four of nine. It is a defined term.
Okay.
Um, do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
So residential care homes is defined as facilities providing residential social and personal care for children. The elderly and people with limited ability for self-care. But where medical care is not a major element. It includes children's homes. Transitional homes, orphanages, rehabilitation centers, and self-help group homes. Convalescent homes, nursing homes, and similar facilities providing medical care are included. Under the definition of medical services, extended care. So it, it looks like it's carving out the. There's other care centers or homes that are then under the medical services for extended care.
And Lucas, I would just point out on, on things like residential care homes and, um, group homes, there's state law that preempts us. From taking specific action.
Oh, that's right.
And. And for example, uh, state law, uh, the Health and Safety Code, residential, uh, for residential care facilities for persons with chronic life-threatening illnesses. The law specifically says no conditional use permit, zoning variance, or other zoning clearance shall be required of a residential care facility that serves six or fewer persons. That is not required of a family dwelling or s- of the same type in the same zone. So.
Okay.
I would, before cha- I would, before making edits to those parts of the, the code, um, I would double-check it against state law. To make sure that we're not, um. Intruding onto an area that the state has already preempted. I know that the state has a, passed a significant body of law on. On group homes and on care homes, residential care homes.
Right. Oh, you know, and I, I do, I think I do have a vague memory of. I think you said that kind of thing at some point earlier and we, we did agree we needed to look into the definitions and make sure it complies.
And, and, and group homes and residential care homes are defined in state law as well, so. Um, yeah.
I was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't have a concern about really the use table, but I just, I wasn't sure what it meant, but I, that's, uh, just. And, um, so, so we're, so separately, we're going to talk about restaurants and we're going to talk about hotels. And we're going to talk about, are we gonna alcoholic beverages?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Very good. Yeah, can't wait. Um, so the other, the only other, uh. Use that I have somewhat. You know, I, I feel like I don't know about permitting it is, um, under, is on page five of nine, under services toward the bottom. Ambulance services, and I know we, I know we've had this discussion before. Um. And I just, I'm not sure why we would permit an ambulance service where we can't. Where it's permitted because, you know, then we can't tell them, they can't turn their siren on at certain times of day or they have to be. You know, they have to, they can't come out of the garage and turn the siren on immediately, that kind of thing.
You're saying there's no restrictions, so in the C1.
Cause then it's permitted, so and even.
And the C1, it's a permitted use.
BP. I would, that, I'm just a little concerned about that. That's, that's all, just a comment. As we move into the, the new formatting from here. Um. And I think, I think Kathy, right, you went through here and kind of raised all the discussion that I. That I would have had, so, good job.
Yeah, thank you. Well, it's a team effort here. I guess we could go now. I don't know, Steve, would you want to now go into the, the, the colored. Proposed new. Now that we. We've kind of exhausted the other one.
I think he nodded, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, he did.
I mean, we could talk about the first colored.
Right.
Uh, uh, use, the apiary and the beekeeping, and I, I don't think there's any difference at all.
You know, the only thing I thought of was. But i- in a way, it's the same thing. I mean, apiar- the apiaries where you keep all the bee boxes. And most beekeepers move their boxes around, typically they don't keep it in one place. Um. And then maybe somebody's, maybe somebody is a beekeeper and they run the, the office of their business from a certain location, but the bees are. The actual boxes are going somewhere else. So that was the only thing I could think of for splitting them up.
I see.
But, um.
And, and there could be, I mean, I, I, I'm pretty sure there's backyard beekeepers in Ojai. And I, I remember from the discussion that we had previously, we were, we thought, because there is a well-organized, um. Ojai beekeeping.
There is.
Club, um. You know, if we wa- I would be willing to con- try to contact them and see if we could get some, um. You know, some comments from them in terms of what they, what they feel that they would need to. Uh, what they would like to see in terms of meeting their needs.
Yeah, they're, and you're right, they, um, are, um. Probably more on the home scale rather than a commercial operation. Um, but right now, um, we're showing beekeeping not allowed in the residential.
Uh, which is, was, was one of my first, um, comments on.
Yeah.
If we move into this section.
I think it, I think it could be allowed and I think you just have to regulate the quantity. I used to, I used to have, years ago, small-scale little bee, uh, apiary offering. As a beekeeper, part, you know, part-time, my husband and I had quite a few hives and.
Oh, my god.
Friend who was a commercial beekeeper, that, that was his business and we used to do stuff with him and. But, um, so I know something, I'm not going to say that I'm the ultimate expert, but I know something about it.
Could there, uh, uh, I don't, I don't remember if we have anything about beekeeping under the animal. Keeping regulations, but.
Talked about that.
We talked about it, it's, it's under its own regulation.
Yeah, we did talk about it, yeah.
It does, it, we already have regulations for beekeeping.
Yes.
Yeah.
So. So maybe we could allow it in res- in some of the residential zones. I would be.
With, with some criteria, because you don't want somebody in a.
Real small.
Ten thousand square foot lot with twenty, a hundred beehives.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, but, and I, I do believe, or maybe something we might want to look at is look at some other. Uh, communities in our region and see. For reference, you know, what do they have for beekeeping?
Yeah.
I can try that.
Oh, there, Steve.
We can hear you.
I have.
Oops, oh, I thought I heard him.
Yeah, I, I heard him as well just for a second. Actually, we do have in Title IV.
Okay.
Which is public welfare morals and conduct is chapter twenty-five. Living within chapter twenty-five is beekeeping. Um, not necessarily apiaries, but beekeeping.
Uh-huh.
The reg- so the regulate, if you have, if you have a hive in your yard or something, you have to follow the, the stated regulations.
Yes. And these regulations have actually been updated recently, two thousand sixteen is what. And these regulations have actually been updated recently. Two thousand sixteen is what I'm seeing here.
Yeah, that's right.
So that's actually encouraging. I was thinking this was from the fifties, but it's not. That's.
I think it got added in two thousand and sixteen. I, you know, I was trying to, I was thinking about this, I was going, God, I remember something and that's, that's what it was.
So, yeah, I mean, on some of the larger lots, at least, you know, looking at the R O four through the R O, well, I don't know, one acre at least. I forget what the R O is. But, um.
Oh, how many?
Based on acreage, I think I.
Well, I'll read, it's right on the front here. R O, single-family residential medium density, uh, three dwelling units per acre is R O. So it's like a third of an acre.
Okay, so we.
It's a pretty good size.
Do the, do the regulations on the beekeeping have a minimum lot size?
It does actually. Number of, uh, and locations of hives, which is Section four dash twenty-five point zero four has permissible in all zones. So it says here, notwithstanding any other provisions of the OMS code, beekeeping shall be permissible in all zoning districts and, and on all property types in accordance with the following restrictions. Then, then it goes into A through F. I'll just give you an example. A says, no more than one hive shall be maintained on lots having less than five thousand square feet in area. So it gives kind of this
Okay.
rolling standard. So it identifies that. Then B goes in on lots having at least five thousand square feet, but less than ten thousand square feet in area. No more than two hives shall be maintained. So it gives kind of this rolling, um, standard.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's, that's actually kind of interesting.
So within that, does that answer our question of should we consolidate apiary and beekeeping? It almost sounds like, the, go ahead, sorry.
As I say, I kind of feel like we should just reference this code section.
I know.
Within the comments section, right?
Yeah.
Um, and does it, um, Lucas, does it go, um, all the way from, say, residential, which we just talked about? Is it allowed on, you know, of course it should be allowed on ag. It should be allowed on open space and, and does it, uh, cover all that in, in this, uh, code?
And, yeah, instead of, instead of going by zones, it says in all zoning districts and all property types. So it gives kind of this, you can really put it anywhere, but you've got to just, you've got to be aware of these parameters based on lot size is really what.
Makes sense, yeah.
Interesting.
So maybe it becomes apiary slash beekeeping and it's one category.
Well, let me do a search for apiaries just real quick here.
Yeah, it's pretty much where you keep the boxes, but like I said.
Okay, the only, the only area where, within our code, that specifies apiaries is within the the use chart, Table two dash six.
Where is he?
Oh.
I see his name. There he is.
Can any of you hear me?
Yes, Steve, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Terrific.
Yay.
You're back.
Okay. Where were we? We're, we're on to the consolidated table now?
I think consolidate the two.
Yeah, we're on the consolidated table and we've, we're, we're diving into apiary versus beekeeping.
Right.
Yeah.
How are they different and why are they, why are they permitted differently?
I don't know that I have an answer for that, but, cuz I can't, I can't, uh, I don't have a crystal ball for how that was, how these two uses were developed. But we actually have within our code, a, a Chapter twenty-five, I think it's four dash, what did I just look at? Four dash twenty-five?
I think that's what you said.
Title Four. I'm sorry, I don't have it anymore.
You did say twenty-five.
Yeah, you did say twenty-five. I wrote that down.
And so.
Beekeeping, right.
Yeah, within that, we, we have some pretty specific parameters that are inclusive of all zones and all property types. But within that, there are specific parameters based on lot size. So for instance, Section four dash twenty-five point zero four has A through F. Within that, like for instance, A says, no more than one hive shall be maintained on lots having less than five thousand square feet in area. And then it, it goes beyond, you know, the next one says on lots having at least five thousand square feet and, 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 but less than ten thousand square feet in area, no more than two hives should be maintained. So it has that kind of parameter built in. So.
Agreeing with the rules or not, my initial impression, besides the fact that Title Four is not within our purview per se, this is probably enough, enough in the way of regulations about beekeeping. If we could agree that apiary is the same as beekeeping, we could just consolidate the lines.
Right? Apiary is the location where you keep them and then beekeeping is the practice of
Oh.
Taking care of them. So it's almost, you could, I think you could put them together or apiary slash beekeeping maybe.
Yeah, that way if someone's saying, well, I'm an apiary, well,
Right.
we would classify you under beekeeping, right? So then you've got these parameters that you got to fall under.
Yeah.
That makes it easier for me when I, when someone asks that question and they get specific about the uses that they want to, they want to fall under. Okay. So beekeeping slash apiary, right?
Yeah. Combined.
The next one we had was mining and excavation, large and small scale.
I, I can't even imagine why we even, we only allow it in open space that is inconsistent with the definition, which I just looked at. I would say.
Large scale nowhere and small scale only in open spaces.
Yeah, open space, the definition or the mean, the purpose is intended to provide areas of open space to protect the public from hazardous conditions. So.
Like the quarry up in the Oahu Canyon.
I think that's enough mining for Ojai.
Um, just, just as a point of clarification, Nikhil, is there any state law that, that, um, that's out there for mining, excavation? Or am I, am I, cuz I know I dealt with this in another city and I remember us going through a C P process for any sort of, um, mining, potential mining or excavation taking place.
Big mineral rights.
You know what I'm talking about, Nikhil?
I don't think you have to allow it in the, in this small city.
Yeah, I don't think so either, but I'm just kind of curious. I, I haven't looked up the state standards or requirements.
On mineral rights?
Yeah.
That, that might actually be preempted by a state law, um, something in the California Public Resources Code.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, that, that usually is preempted. And I mean, there, we might have some regulatory authority over it, um, but I mean, depends on the site. I mean, I'm looking at this, Lucas, what exactly, what zone is this in?
It's allowed as a C U P in this, in the o, open space zone.
Open space, yeah.
Right, well, I mean, that might be a relic, um, of, uh, I, I can't imagine a C U P would be issued, um, subject to pretty serious conditions, but for example, someone wanted to say, put an, um, apply to put in a coal mine there, unlikely, um. It would be unlikely, um, to go there, but I also think, um, there are so many other mining regulations contained within the Public Resources Code that I, I think that largely preempt us from making any major changes. Other than we could simply remove that from the, uh, entirely, we could recommend, you could recommend removal entirely.
That would be my thought. I mean, I, I think my feeling is you're probably right. It is a relic. It's a relic from, God knows, the nineteen twenty.
Mineral rights, probably.
Yeah.
Well, I noticed.
To the creek and you're gonna go out and start.
It's subject to, it's subject to staff, maybe checking with, uh, the city manager or, um, you know.
Besides that, neither mining nor excavation is in the definitions anywhere. So we don't know where to go with it anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
Want to just delete those lines?
If possible.
A question from, for Nikhil.
Yes.
If something is not mentioned in the land use tables or table, if we get a consolidated one, what does that mean? Does that mean there's no regulation or does it mean it's not allowed?
So we, Ojai has what's called a permissive zoning, uh, uh, structure and permissive zoning means that, um, all things not specifically permitted by the code are, are, are not, are banned.
So that's called permissive?
Yes, it's a little counterintuitive, but permissive means we have given permission to certain land uses that we've all, but anything that doesn't appear on our list of permitted land uses is, uh, not, is not, not allowed.
Okay, unless, unless the director can find it as similar to an allowed use.
Yeah, if there's an allowed use, yes, but if it's a, it's a, it's a completely unallowed use, um, it's not. So.
Or, or a similar use. I think that's the other thing. There's, there's a provision, there's a provision in the code that, that gives me or this commission, um, some, some flexibility in those different, different uses. I know we're talking about potentially removing this, but there are potential uses out there that aren't listed here that have a similar, that can potentially be and fit into a use that we already have listed here. So I think that, that's already built into our code. So removing something like this doesn't necessarily mean that we don't have any authority over it.
Yeah.
Certainly do in terms of how we handle it. And we've got, we have steps in place already through this code for that.
Yeah, that, that's exactly what permissive zoning, uh, does is that.
Requires permission.
Yeah, it, well, no, it, it limits land uses to only that which has already been permitted by the code. Anything that hasn't specifically been permitted by the code is deemed to be, uh, not allowed.
Yeah, okay. Well, I would not be, I would not object to taking both those lines out.
I was hearing consensus from at least two, maybe three.
Yeah, I, I said the same thing. Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Okay. And then we have, uh, the nature and open space preserve versus nature preserve.
Seems like it should be the same thing or consolidated, but then when you look across the chart, uh, you know, it's not.
Permitted differently, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure why it couldn't be permitted in every zone, actually.
Yeah, nature, nature does not appear in the definitions.
Oh, okay.
Open space is land that's kept free of building structures and paved parking areas, but specifically including restricted lands, provided that previous recreational facilities like golf courses and driving ranges shall qualify as open space at the ratio of ninety percent of their land area. I'm not sure why qualifying at some ratio makes any difference, but that's what the definition says.
You know, Steve, I was just thinking, um, something that came to mind was, sure, an entire property could be designated, but what about, um, like a property where there's a wildlife corridor? In other words, it's, has a use for something else, but a portion of it is preserved. I, I mean, I actually, not in Ojai, but I had a client somewhere else in Ventura County where we ended up doing that. Um, but I don't know.
Wildlife corridor would.
Category.
Well, I'm thinking a wildlife corridor would be an easement on
Yeah, maybe.
otherwise zoned land.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Right. But I, I just, I don't know why it wouldn't be something that could potentially, uh, appear in any zone. So.
Right.
Unless, unless the idea is to, is to have a specific zone designated for it, but I don't like seeing that here.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I'm seeing it in four different zones potentially.
Right.
And I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be allowed in other zones. Now, maybe C one and BP and V M U and M one and M P D, maybe it's not appropriate there. But, you know, it's like a private park.
Right.
It seems to me if somebody bought a piece of property and wanted to let it lie there quietly for some time, they ought to be able to do that. Um, but does that make it open space or a nature preserve or is it just unused, otherwise zoned?
I was just thinking of a property where something like that could happen in the city, within the city limits. There's the McCarty property. I think it's, how many, is that seventeen acres? No, I don't know if it's that big. But it's across from, uh, Nordoff. It's on Maricopa Highway, uh, bordering, uh.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's two parcels there in that big triangle, yes.
Yeah, and it's the larger one, for instance. Um, but I was just thinking, oh, I could see how part of that could get developed and part of it actually could become part of an open space because it, it's part of a whole drainage system and it connects to the, the Bassett Meadow and
Right.
For example.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's going to, but I could see that could happen.
Yeah.
But if you, if you were to develop that property, would you want part of it called open space and therefore never developable?
Well, if that's part of the development agreement, I mean, I, I, there is a, there is a sense of permanence to this nature preserve idea.
Right.
Or open space preserve. You have to be designated as such and, um, you know, if it were done as a part of, um, an agreement to, for a development, it, it would be in perpetuity presumably, you know, so.
But if you had a planned development permit,
Yeah.
which we have talked about at times, that overrides the zoning anyway, right, Lucas?
Uh, I would say so, yeah. I'm just looking at it from a, um, it's just an interesting, cuz when you think of nature and open space as a preserve, or nature preserve, just in, in general, the, the two seem to be kind of interchangeable.
Right.
Uh, I mean, I'm thinking of large swaths of area, but then again, you could dedicate specific areas that are potentially sensitive where there's been.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that, that was the example that you were using with the, the property across the street from Nordoff.
Yeah.
I see, I see both, both pieces to that and potentially that's within any zone. Typically, you end up with those, you tend to carve out areas that are already existing within the city and, um, the hope is, is that if development does happen in the future, that you look to that through the environmental process, the environmental review process. So, um, they are in case by case scenario. I don't see why it couldn't be encompassing within the residential zones. I, I never agree with the commercial BP, V M U, M one, M P D. That just feels, um, you know, in, intentional, but maybe not. I mean, to see one, there are, there are vacant lots that could end up, as you're going through environmental process, there is something that ends up coming up from it.
Right, like the species that needs to be protected or a natural spring or just something, a feature item that.
I mean, one of the, one of the, I'm not sure if it's necessarily native up, up in, up in here, but, uh, there was a burrowing owl that, that anytime that there was anything proposed within Riverside or Claremont, the burrowing owl was always the number one, um, item that we were looking at in terms of whether or not there was a habitat. Um, didn't matter what size a lot it was either. So.
Yeah.
And there's, there's potential for natural preserve really anywhere, depending on what sort of species we're looking at.
I think it's a good thing.
We should be careful because of, you know, we'll, we'll get letters, I mean, on, on, on projects, it'll, it'll run into the E I R process if we, if we have. And, um, you know, there are, you know, certain, I, I don't know if there's, uh, Lucas, you can, you can tell, uh, if there's any, anything that unknown, just like the Burrowing Owl or where I grew up in the South Bay, um, there is the, um, Palasuris blue butterfly, uh, which, um, complicates nearly every process, uh, that happens, uh, in, in that area. Where I grew up, so, but I think there may be something that, that shows up here, so.
We have rules here in Ojai. We have rules here in Ojai about disturbing nesting birds. It's only part of the year, but it's there.
Yeah, but that's, so that's yeah, that's whether it's a tree permit or environmental review, that's that's a pretty typical.
Construction.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's pretty typical, but like.
In this whole entire state, actually.
Yeah, I think it's statewide now. But yeah, no, that's a good point.
I guess my question, my first question would be, is there a need to separate those two definitions? I don't see one.
I don't either.
Neither do I.
Neither, I think it could be combined or one.
But we will, I mean, there's no definition now, so we would presumably.
Yeah, nature, nature is not in the definitions, open space is. So why don't we just leave it open space?
Or it could just be the first one, nature and open space preserve, and we add nature to the definition and
there we go, strike the nature preserve. I like that, Kathy.
Yeah.
And then
So what was it?
Where where else might, where else might we allow it in other zones? Seems like it could be in any zone except maybe that orange batch in the middle.
Well, Lucas was saying that earlier, but 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 potentially it could be in all of them.
Yeah, no, I was kind of biting my tongue with the C one and
I know.
even the BP.
Yeah.
The only thing that I'm thinking about is SPTCO, SPL. I mean, we're talking about an overlay um for affordable housing, I mean.
Oh, that's, yeah.
I, yeah, I tend to stay away from those.
If the.
I mean, you could build affordable housing and then dedicated part of it is open space. But what's what's the legal, maybe Nikhil can tell us, is there a a legal um restriction that you're putting yourself, putting on yourself by asking to have something classified as open space? Because the definition says land kept free of building structures and paved parking areas. Or is it just unused space in in an otherwise developed parcel?
So that, I mean, there's, it it implies a lot of things. I mean, simply designating something as open space, um you know, there there's a specific definition in our code, but also there may be something in the general, I know we're going into a general plan update, but there may be something in the general plan that also addresses you know, the use, the use of open space and what the city believes the use of open space is. I think Lucas, um you're more familiar with our last iteration of the general plan. Um but I believe there might be something on open space use in the in the general plan.
Yeah, I can, I can look at that closer in the land use and even potentially within the rec um element as well. There may be something embedded into either one of those. So, yeah, why don't we turn to that first?
And there's a government code section on point that's uh six, five, nine, one, zero. Um which talks about every city um preparing and adopting an open space zoning uh uh ordinance consistent with the local open space plan, which um would be folded into our generals, general plans, so. Um.
There's a land use element that may include that already.
Yeah, exactly.
Hmm, okay. You said that's government code six, five, nine, one, zero?
Yeah, nine, one, zero. Yeah.
If we consolidate those two into one line, do we just put all the permissions that are in there? Come back to it later and decide if we want to add permissions for other places?
Yeah, I I would also say as a as a recommendation or or something to to think about um honing in that definition of what we're talking about here.
And Lucas, uh just one more code section for you, it's government code section six, five, five, six, zero. Um which talks about open space land, um which is um and it talks about uh how it's designated, um is that it's dependent on how it's designated by the um open space element of the general plan, so.
Okay, yeah, so we're guided by the general plan then, yes, like
Yeah.
we should.
Should you always?
Makes sense.
Yeah, we should always, yeah, so.
Well, let's, let's come back to that then. Maybe we could move on to the second page of the draft consolidated table. There are some more marked duplications there. Two of them on the second page.
We've got outdoor recreational facility accessory, is that what we're talking about next?
Mm-hmm.
And then park, playground, and then park, playground, recreation.
Recreation center.
That's interesting.
So the fact that it occurs three times means it's once in each of the three tables that we have now. Outdoor.
You know what the accessory means on the first one? How to recreate?
Secondary use, secondary use to the primary use of parcel is what they usually do with accessory.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't, I don't see the need for it. I think we could, we could say park, playground. Now, recreation center.
That's different.
Makes me think of a structure.
Like the Boyd Center.
Right.
Sarasodi.
And the others, the others don't, to me, imply that there's any structure involved.
Well, that could be defined because you could go to Libby. For instance, like a recreation center, you're actually having classes, et cetera, in, you know, like in a gym or what have you. Whereas at Libby Park, there is a structure, but that's basically like a ticket ticket house, so to speak. I mean, that's, you know, when they're having an event, ticket sales are happening and they're not actually doing a class in there or something.
Right, there's also a gazebo.
There's a gazebo, there's also the bowl and the bowl is there. So we might want to kind of define. I wonder if it's, if it's, it seems like it kind of boils down to to use, and I mean, if we think about the parks in the city, there's Daily Park, which is a very um a passive park with no structure at all or no playground. Then we have Clough Vista Park, we have Sarasodi Park, and then we also have um Libby Park. Did I cover all them? I think we just have those four parks.
I think so.
Um.
Is there a Miller?
A little bit different, and I'm wondering if that's why this was broken out.
Well, the first, the first two are are permitted exactly the same. The third one that has recreation center in the title.
Right, has the CUP, yeah, and the PL, no. Um.
Well, I have no definitions to fall back on, so we're kind of on our own here.
Right, so to me, it's almost like, you know, if we, if we were going to break it out, it's it's almost best to do with what's going on at that park, what are the facilities, what is it offer? Um or do we just lump all the parks together? I don't know. Um so the one with the recreation center.
And the one with the recreation center is permitted with a CUP in open space.
Right, and then PL, it's permitted.
That's, that's a structure in an open space.
Yeah, let me, I'm going to look at our, okay, so that's the blue, I'm looking at my map here. Let's just see what what we have for the park, so there's that one. They don't even show the one on date, oh no, maybe that's it up there. Oh no, that's not it.
Uh Daily Park is is up uh what, it's east?
White Oak Circle.
It's off of uh.
On White Oak Circle.
Yeah, I see it, so they're all, yeah, they're all the light blue.
That's PL.
Right there, yeah.
Light blue is PL.
Yeah, surrounded by the residential there.
Right.
Um and then Clough is right there. Libby Park, yeah.
Rotary.
Go. Uh.
We have the demonstration garden, the cemetery, the skate park, Rotary Park.
Well, thanks, Sherry.
For a lower Libby Park and. We have a lot more, okay.
But is uh, I thought the demonstration and Lower Libby were part of Libby, but are they considered a separate park? I mean, they're not continued necessarily, but they're, I first thought they were like under the Libby Park Master Plan or something. I could be wrong, yeah. Maybe not.
So are you, are you talk, are you looking at the um existing code tables or are we in the consolidated?
I'm.
This is a consolidated one plus the zoning map.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'd sure like to reduce some of the duplication here.
I would too.
Maybe pull those first two together since they're already coded the same.
Right.
And and maybe, and maybe then we need to talk more about recreation center.
Right. Is that even just a separate item?
I think that that could be a separate item
Right.
from park, playground, and outdoor recreation.
Right, and then recreation center is stands alone, maybe.
As as a structure de- devoted to recreation.
Right, right.
As opposed to
Yeah.
open space.
Yeah.
But then it's permitted in an open space and the others are not. You can't have a park or playground in open space, but you can have a recreation center.
Yeah.
That seems backwards to me.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let's be consistent.
Yeah.
Well, let's start with some baby steps. Can we consolidate the first two lines and we'll figure out what name to put on it?
I would be okay with that because they do both have the exact same.
John?
Zoning.
Okay.
He's on mute, I don't know if he knows. There goes.
Oh, hello. Yeah, no, I'm I'm good with that.
Yeah, okay.
Just, just on the outdoor recreational facility accessory. I'm just kind of curious, I'm curious what that is.
I don't know, I would, I would, I would drop accessory and maybe add outdoor recreation facility.
Park, playground.
And playground.
Yep.
And have that all one line.
Yeah, I think that's probably good.
Yeah.
I noticed.
But then recreation center, I'm not sure what to do with it.
I almost, I almost feel like it needs its own, like, take park and playground out out of that and just put recreation center.
Yeah, that's what I said earlier, possibly, yeah.
But then we need to, then we will need to consider how it's permitted because recreation center standing alone says to me that's some kind of a structure.
Well, you know, here's the other issue, like if you do think about Sarasodi Park, it's, it is a park. Right?
Yeah.
Not just a recreation center, it is a combination. So maybe we do need to have the combination one. Because in other words, would you have, would you have two separate zoning things for that park, because you have a recreation center and you've got outdoor recreation areas? Seems like you would have one. So maybe it, maybe it's kind of the combo, but the separation is that it does have the recreation center.
Maybe, maybe that second line then could be park, comma, playground with recreation center.
Yeah, I like that.
As opposed to without.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Let's do that. And then we'll figure out the permissions later?
Yeah.
Yeah, round two.
All right.
That's fine.
And and I, with that uh term accessory, I think somebody did say, yeah, I that I noticed that it appears in a number of places and I could never quite figure it out, so my
Mean, yeah.
But we'll, we'll come to those other ones.
Yeah, top of that same page, health fitness facility.
Right.
Accessory.
Accessory, yeah.
Not clear why.
Right, it 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 makes it confusing, actually.
Because you, you ask the question, well, what does that mean and what is it? And what's the accessory?
Yeah. May want to get rid of those.
Yeah, that's my general inclination.
Yeah. Or just question mark, can we
Mm-hmm.
get a little more research on it?
Right.
Down in residential uses, then we've got two lines with different permissions again, and the difference between the two is the letter S.
Well, one says caretaker and employee quarters, caretaker or employee quarters. One says and, and the other says or.
There it, yeah.
Well, or, Nikhil, or is generally inclusive, not exclusive?
So or is one of the two uses.
Right.
But it is generally um inclusive in that you could have both uses. One of, one of, one of, one, one of, one, one use or the other, I guess, is.
Or both?
Or.
Or 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 both.
Or both.
Or both. Whereas and means you've got, you definitely have both.
Definitely have both, and that doesn't make sense.
The second one, yeah. And then although they do.
I don't, I don't hear you, Lucas, you seem to be speaking.
Sorry. Yeah, I had myself muted, sorry about that.
How about if we go with or and put all the permissions on one line? If or is inclusive. Because I don't think you want to say you can only have it in IR one, two, and three if you have both caretaker and employee quarters.
I mean, I I kind of understand the difference between the two here, but not necessarily understanding the the rationale for why the uses are within certain categories. Caretaker and employee quarters, that means you have both, to me, it seems to me like it means that you have both on.
Right.
Where the caretakers or employee quarters, you may have the caretakers onsite, but the employee quarters would not be. Um
Right.
But it looks like there's CUP.
Or you might have employee quarters without a caretaker.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, so then that's, that's even a little bit more confusing. You would have employee quarters. But not with a caretaker.
And let me ask this question, is are the employees definitely um ancillary or connected to being that they only are caretakers or could it be employees quarters for some other operation besides caretakers? Or am I picking apart too much?
No, I I think it's an appropriate pick.
Yeah.
And notice there that caretaker or employee quarters are permitted in the C one zone. But no other residential use.
Yeah, I know, isn't that interesting?
So you want to, you want to have a store with the residents over it, then the person who lives there has to be a caretaker or an employee, couldn't be the owner of the business.
Oh, you, this kind of came up a while ago, one of our, not too long ago meetings.
Mm-hmm.
With this, remember? Yeah.
It does seem a little odd.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't see a problem with allowing either of those two uses in C one, M one. Ag, ag makes sense. And PL.
No, I realize.
Combination. Now, I remember at the World University, that's, that's PL property currently. And there, there was all the classrooms or or whatever you want to characterize them. And there is a residence on that property on the northwest corner that is, that was a caretaker for the university buildings.
Right.
That kind of, that kind of ties together, at least with the PL piece of.
Um, yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, maybe it's a separate.
But it requires a CUP in Agland or in M one.
And in Agland, that would probably. And in Agland, that would probably, well, it could be any caretaker and it could end or be employees on Ag.
Well, Agland, you've also got farm worker housing.
Yep, that's what I'm thinking of, yeah.
So.
Well.
Oh, me.
Sounds like we need to tease it apart. And.
Would it, I mean, is there any definitions for it to kinda give us a little bit of guidance here in terms of how we would handle it? Let me see, let's just type that in. Okay, so I have caretaker or employee quarters.
Oh, good.
Defined. See if it gives us some clarity here. It states a residence that is an accessory to a non-residential primary use of the site. Where needed for security or 24 hour care or supervision. And that's caretaker or employee quarters.
And it doesn't restrict, it doesn't say it has to be the, the business owner, which is kind of interesting. Cause this gives us an out in the commercial zone.
Yeah.
Cause it's permitted in the commercial zone. So you could in fact have a residence over a store.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I see we have home occupation and home occupations, plural, just below that. Which gives you an out for all those residential zones.
Mm-hmm.
So. But back on, back on this one, I think we oughta just go with the or category.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll come back to where it should be permitted, but the or at least is inclusive of the and.
Mm-hmm. What does everybody think?
Yeah, it sounds good to me.
Okay.
You know, I, this might be a dumb question, but when they're saying a caretaker, you know, my, the first thing that came to my mind was somebody who worked in um, a facility and you're taking care of people.
Or of the.
Like in a home, like that we talked about earlier. Um, but it could be somebody who is, lives on the property and is maintaining the property in some other completely different implication.
Right.
So.
When you're taking care of people, they usually use the word caregiver instead of caretaker.
Oh, okay. I stand corrected, thank you. No, 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 now it's, it's better because I kept thinking yeah, caretaker, cause I've heard people say that. So that clarified it for me. Okay, well.
And how about the, uh, home occupation versus plural home occupations?
I think that can be combined.
Yep, with, with the.
With the.
I don't think we need the plural.
I, I agreed. We don't have plural on most others, well, I guess we do, but.
Yeah.
Home occupation permitted, yeah.
Yeah.
That's good. Permitted wherever.
Page three. Oh, all that restaurant stuff.
Oh, yeah. Is that what we're gonna do on a separate night or?
I would, I would like for us to, to hold that off for a separate night, cause that is.
Okay.
That is one that we're going to do a deep dive into.
Yeah. Later day.
It also includes our admittedly unique definition of outdoor dining.
Right.
Right.
Which will get separated out, private and public right away.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's hold that off and that'll be an, as its own separate, um, agenda item that we'll we'll definitely dive into. And it'll have the get, different code sections that we'll get to tear, tear through and kind of decipher and figure out.
Okay, well farther down that page under services, you've got hotel motel and also hotel motel lodge and timeshare facility. Um. And the permissions are different again.
Yeah.
Do, first of all, do we want, do we want to regulate hotels and motels and lodges? And timeshare facilities all the same way? A lodge is, to me, it's more like a well, I would think of it as a social club, not a.
Cause it gets back to the definition.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, sometimes a lodge is.
I mean, like at a fancy resort, sometimes it's called.
Right.
You're talking about the structure of the building?
I don't, I don't think it has any specific meaning, it's just, they'll, they'll reference the main, you know, lodging building as the lodge or something, but.
Right.
A lodge for lodging, okay.
Well, just, in general, it's kind of a fanceified reference, don't you think? These days, I mean, current, current use.
Yeah.
Now, timeshare, timeshare facilities are kind of by definition transient occupancy. Multiple owners and transient occupants.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too.
Uh, you know, I don't, it, well, I don't know that it's happening these days, but, um, it used to be that a lot of apartment buildings would be converted to timeshare uses and so.
Condos, yeah.
Condos, that's what I was thinking, or.
And when that's happening, then you have a problem with losing your, a lot of your affordable housing stock.
Well, and you notice none of, neither one of those things is permitted currently in any residential zone.
Mm-hmm.
Which.
Right.
Says you can't convert an apartment building to timeshare. You could probably convert it to condos, but right now not to timeshare.
Right, yeah, based on this, right, yeah, yeah.
Or you could convert it to timeshare if the time was a calendar month. But you can't timeshare weeks.
Let's see.
So what is?
Yeah.
Um, is the Emerald Guan, which is located up at the top of, um.
Up at the top of Blanche or I think.
Something.
Yeah.
That there, um, and that is in a residential zone.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure what parcel that is, I'm trying to look on the map to see if it has a different.
Let's see.
Land use classification.
That's what Patricia Street up, no, not Patricia, Pauline.
Pauline, yeah. I don't know if that shows up in here, let's see, there's Emily, yeah. Well, it's kind of hard to tell.
It all looks kind of dark red, R zero.
Yeah.
Or is it reddish brown? No, I think it's R zero. Or R O.
Right.
R O.
Three unit.
But again, that's, that's something grandfathered, or maybe it's CUPed.
Probably.
Rumors that they're not, they're not abiding by the CUP, but it has a CUP.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it probably is a CUP, you know.
And that would override, but it, it's not listed here with a CUP either.
Yeah, that's why I was curious, yeah, it's not listed.
What do you think, Lucas?
Members of commission, uh, just as a quick heads up, um, I would maybe stay away from talking about specific properties in, in the, in the, in the case that they come before the commission.
Okay. Thank you, yeah.
Or, okay, as an example, uh, how do we, could we draw, could we discuss a hypothetical example?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was about to say something, cause you're asking me for, for specific zones and, and use types. Uh, I, I do agree with that, so thank you, uh, Nikhil, but there's nothing wrong with talking about hypotheticals in terms within, you know, specific zones, absolutely. That's how we've, I mean, that's how we've gotta figure out
Right.
these uses as the, as they exist currently. Um, and discerning whether or not we need to change some of these, some of these letters to Ps to CUPs to not permitted.
Right. And I noticed hotel motel by itself without lodge and timeshare is only permitted in IR3, which is the very largest, like over forty acres or something.
Like the N.
We know where that came from. I think the, there's only one property in town that fits that definition by our three.
Yeah.
But there's no reason
Gosh.
in my mind to have a hotel motel period line separate from the other. Consolidate the permissions and come back at a second run and see if we think there ought to be other places where a P or a CUP is appropriate.
Agreed, I mean, I would be inclined to not even use lodge or timeshare facility and just have a line for hotel motel.
Right.
Well, lodge, lodge is definitely not in the definitions.
Well, lodge is, lodge is in the definitions.
I'm sorry, it is?
It is, but it's, it's under a different, um.
Oh, it's like.
Not under L.
No, I did a quick search for it, I'll do it again, it's under.
Like a club where we talk about membership clubs?
Yep.
Yeah, like a social club.
Yeah, so it doesn't, so, yeah, we should definitely take that out.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, like the Moose Lodge or something.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And there's no definition for timeshare, so I'm not really sure why we're, why, why this specific use chart is carving it out into its own category when there's no definition to kinda specify why.
Well, do, do you commissioners think that we ought to have something about timeshare facilities?
No.
Or do you think we're, we've covered it with the short-term rental restrictions that are already in place?
Probably.
I mean, timeshares have a membership uh, characteristic, don't they? Don't you buy a?
Timeshare is typically multiple owners of a single property.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't think that is, I think of that as different than a, a short-term rental, but.
You know, it's interesting, I, um, several years ago, a friend of mine said, oh, hey, I have a timeshare up in Salas, Spismo County, uh, we're not gonna go, would you like to go? It turns out it was at a hotel, but they had a certain amount of rooms
Oh.
that were actually timeshares integrated within the hotel.
You know, and I don't have a problem with that. It's, I have more of a problem with timeshares when there's some kind of conversion of existing.
Right, right.
Um, living.
Thinking housing stock.
Housing stock, yeah, but if there's a hotel and they wanna come, if they were, you know, wanted to come into Ojai and the, I'm trying to think of the names, like the Weston, doesn't the Weston do a lot of timeshares with their?
I think so.
I think a lot of the big chains, whether it's Weston or Marriott or.
Right.
Or Hyatt, they probably all have timeshare facilities.
Right.
What we're talking about here at the moment at least is the use of the land, not how it got there. Not, not did somebody throw a bunch of people out of a building and, and sell their, and sell their rooms.
Right, but if, if a mo, if a hotel or motel wanted to come into town and, and we needed to review them. Um, and they had a, they had a portion of their facility that was going to be allocated for timeshare. That, I don't have any problem with that, and I mean, it just speaks more strongly to reviewing hotel and we're gonna talk about this separately, but reviewing hotel motels with a CUP. Um, because I wouldn't want a motel hotel to come in and have timeshare arrangements unless we actually got to really, uh, review the entire operation under a CUP. Frankly, I, I, I just, I don't think there's any other, I'm getting ahead of myself here with, in terms of what we're talking about, but I don't think there's any other community where you're gonna find hotels and motels do not require CUPs. It's, it's just unheard of, because they, they have so many potential impacts on a community. So to consider them as a permitted uses is kind of, um, quite unusual.
How about if we consolidate the two lines, take, well, make it the second line name, take lodge out and move the permission in IR3 down to that line. And just take out the hotel motel line. And then we can figure out what to do with it later.
But for now, let me can do that.
Now, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
We'll come back to it.
I don't see anything on page four right offhand, except we've got offices again. Why would real estate offices be separate from business administrative and professional offices?
Which we kind of covered, but earlier in the meeting.
Um, but there is one difference, real estate offices are not permitted in the VMU and business professional and administrative are.
Right, and earlier I said, oh, it seems, or I made the suggestion that possibly they could be in the VMU.
Yeah. In which case we could just add real estate to that definition of offices.
So you're, you're suggesting real estate offices would be permitted in the VMU?
Yeah.
If it's a single, if it's a single person or, you know, one or two people, kind of an office, I would agree. If it's a, if it's a larger office, I'm not sure, so sure.
Maybe this.
I don't know, I'm thinking about it, I don't know.
Maybe the size of the buildings in the VMU dictate the size of the.
Yeah.
The operation, you know.
I mean, if you converted the whole lavender inn to individual real estate Realtors offices, would that bother you?
No, because of where it's located. But I mean, there might be.
Yeah.
Is that VMU there at the, I mean, assuming it is, no, I don't have a problem with, I wouldn't have a problem with that because of its location. You know, there's the dentist office and there's, uh, the grocery market across the street and the bank and so forth. But some of those other streets um, in VMU, I don't know, I'm not, I don't.
Well, the business administrative and professionals already allowed in VMU.
Yeah.
Real estate, I don't see as being substantially different from the others.
Yeah, I get, I think I might agree with you on that, yeah.
Wanna just consolidate those two lines, add real estate to the title on the first one? And then it's allowed in C1 BP, VMU, M1 and MPD.
Okay. Lucas, do you see any issues with that?
We see a problem, what?
Not, this is, not necessarily. The one thing I'm thinking about with this is you have office and then you, and then you have kind of general statements, business, administrative, professional, right? Those are kind of general statements.
And they're different from government.
And they are different from government, and then you have, you have real estate under there. And then I was looking at the definitions. And if you look at, at business administrative and professional as a definition, it highlights fifteen different use categories, including attorneys, advertising agencies.
Yeah.
Counseling services.
Oh, wow.
Mine are real estate, yeah.
Okay.
And that also covers real estate. So I'm wondering.
Oh. We could just shorten it to offices and leave it.
Well, I'm, yeah, I, I'm just wondering if we can shorten it, knowing that we can use the definition as the all-inclusive. And the definition's built in here nicely.
So it's O, under O for the definition, or off.
Yeah, under offices, it has accessory and then it has business administrative and professional.
Uh-huh.
And it lists a, a pretty healthy number of uses.
And, yeah, but real estate, oh. It says in the, for instance. It says in the, for instance, it says real estate offices. Yeah, we could just drop the line that says offices, real estate. Uh, on the basis that it's already covered in the other one, in the definition.
Agreed, yep, that's good.
Good catch, Lucas.
That's what I'm here for.
So are government offices different? Just curious.
Well, government offices are in the PL zone.
Oh, oh, I guess Pete, maybe more people go to government offices?
I would think so.
Probably, okay.
Depending on what the, what, you know, what the offices are for, but. Maybe there's a little more activity or just because of the zoning.
And the other, the other types of offices are frequently open on weekends and holidays and government offices aren't.
Yeah, they're closed, yeah.
All right, well, Lucas, I'm sure you've taken a bunch of notes. You wanna? Wanna try something else for a while here?
Lots of digest here, right? I was expecting that, so. I wasn't going into this thinking I was gonna have a clean slate here.
I know after, after a couple of hours, maybe we would all like to just go back and look at. The originals again and see if there's something that goes plunk when you read the originals. And then go back to the consolidated and see if it's changed or should it be changed?
Going, going forward, well, maybe not next time, but at some point going forward. It, it would be nice to have this in legislative, you know, format where we show what's been changed because I, it's. It is, it gets hard to go back and forth and then I lose track and.
And the, the big table is already an eye test, so.
But I guess it wouldn't, it doesn't matter until we kind of have a thorough discussion of the whole table.
Right.
And then from that point, if we could do legislative format, it, that would be really great.
Now, when you're saying legislative format, you're talking about within each of the use, the use charts?
So you say, so, so, so if there's a change, you show a little, um.
It's, uh, using the strike throughs and underlines.
Yep, that's what you're talking about. Perfect. I can do that for, for the existing use charts.
For putting it on this table, that is, it is kind of a pain. I could come and help you.
It's, it's, it's definitely time consuming. Um, if you're offering services, I, I am not gonna say.
To get my second vaccine.
Um, okay, yeah, I can, I can definitely go back and, and, uh, and do that for the existing. Use charts to show that strikeout and underlining piece. And then we, we can continue to build on that too. To ultimately get to this kind of big, uh, mega use chart that we've got.
And we will have to rewrite a good deal of the prose in the early part of chapter two. Because it currently refers to three separate tables.
Yeah, that's, that's something else that we need to talk about with this, um, but let's work on, on these charts. And we'll figure out how that, um, cause that's gonna be a big red line, um, piece as well. Absolutely.
Okay, well, let's declare a temporary victory and move forward.
Thank you, Steve.
Item three is a review of two sections of title nine. That the BAB recommended move to title ten. This is in addition to the two chapters that we discussed briefly at the last meeting.
Yeah, I will have to admit, I did, I did overlook these two pieces because they are so small and carved out. Um, when I initially looked at this, I saw really just two main chapters, which was the chapter seven and the chapter thirteen. Um, but taking a second look and, um, and discovering that really there were two other. Sections that I have here for tonight for discussion, um, needed to be addressed before we, uh. Before we can kind of put this to bed in terms of just, you know, deciding which sections. Um, or even chapters in this case, and in terms of how we're looking at this. Take a, take a second look or even get included within, um, title ten. And then if so, where? So I think the first step is identifying if these two sections that we're identifying here, which is. Section nine dash two point zero five for plot plans. Whether that's appropriate to be folded into title, title ten somewhere. And, and the same thing is true for section nine dash two point zero six, conditions of approval, whether that's. Appropriate to be folded into, um, title ten as well. So be leaving title nine and, and we'd be taking that on.
Yeah, I did, I did a search on, on the phrase plot plan. And of course it occurs in nine dash two point zero five. Then it's in ten two four oh five about protection enhancement of solar access. But it's not defined anywhere. Ten two four oh five as plan view.
Yeah, I thought there was.
Two four oh five, yes.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if this is kind of, if it, if it's, um, even outdated. In other words, for every project that's going to be, uh, submitted, whether it's, um. Administrative or if it's going to the planning commission, aren't they required to, to turn in plot plans? But I thought, were they referring to a plat, P L A T, was that a?
Nine two oh five, and it says exactly that. You're not gonna get a permit for any commercial. Or multi-residential development in excess of three dwelling units until you first submitted a plot plan.
But is this a little, is it outdated? Because we have to do it. Even for a, a two-story sing, you know, residential, single-family residential. In other words. We have our standards, that what's, but the procedure that's required and what you're supposed to be turning in. And it's not just for, you know, to a developer with more than three units. So it, I almost seemed a little archaic. Um, I don't know if it was like a remnant from, you know, the past. But that was my opinion, I don't know.
Well, then there's ten two four oh five that's talking about solar access. That says a plan view and a similar, a shadow plan are plot plans without defining what plot plan is. And then there's something over in seven public works. It has to do with a permit for a well. Uh, I'm not sure that any of them are necessary to what we have in title ten. And we might just suggest that nine two zero five. Be changed to reserved and let the BAB decide if they eventually want to put something else there. I don't think we need it.
Agreed.
Yeah, it's, it's like, yeah, I think it's kind of outdated and redundant, you know?
Yeah, I'm thinking we use, we typically use site plan. I mean, when I'm talking. I don't use the term plot plan anymore. Maybe when I was an intern twenty, twenty some years ago.
Right, but it's, I think it's outdated, yeah.
It's, it's definitely, and I would say that's, it feels like it's more of a term that's not necessarily used in California. I've seen that term used in other states.
Yeah, I think you're right, that's.
That's why I thought, did they mean a plat, P L A T, which is a plan that has, you know, certain information on it, but I don't think that's what they meant.
Yeah, it's typically for sub, subdividing purposes, or when I think of a plot plan.
I guess Steve's recommendation of, of we kind of strike it, but then they still.
Strike it out, reserve it, and not move it to title ten. The other one, nine two oh six, though. Is conditions of approval and it specifically references the planning commission or council. Has to do with traffic. That seems like there is, there is a piece of. Ten that talks about traffic management, right?
Yeah, it's basically, you know, they have the reference at the bottom, um. You know, if there's a condition of approval of such proposed improvements or use to the issuance of a billing permit. That sufficient rights of way be dedicated and improvements be installed to meet such needs. It, it, it may need to be reworded and updated, I, I don't know, but. Otherwise, it seems like it does belong in title, title ten, I guess. Or is it even the public, or, or public works? Having to do with the public right of way.
I'm trying to remember, Lucas, do you recall where the traffic management stuff is? Is that public works?
I see this, I see this as something that, that goes, I mean, we do have, we do have something in the code that talks about. Findings and decision. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I guess that's for variances, but there's. Something in the code that talks about the ability of the commission to apply conditions to a project, um, if it's not there. It might not be a bad idea to put it there, and I actually think that something like this could be expanded because. We can apply conditions of approval to a project that deal with any kind of. Impact that would be generated by the project. So it's more than, um, traffic and, and, um, infrastructure. And it almost is like this, this, uh, this section could be broadened. And I, I, I just don't know if we have anything in the code right now that talks about applying the. Ability to apply conditions to a project.
You know, I, we did have a project and I won't say what the project was, but it has come to planning commission. Actually off and on quite a few times. It's a certain parcel. Um, with concept plans, um. And I do recall that I, I was on the planning commission. We actually, um. Approved a DRP for this project, but we did include, um. An ease, a, a portion of the property that would be an easement for, let's say like a bike. Trail, pedestrian trail. And also there was a dead end street that was gonna open up and it had to do with, you know, internal circulation on the property. So it, it basically was a good example of what we're talking about right here. And as a planning commission, we did discuss it and as a, we did. Actually, uh, make some conditions that had to do with the public right of way and including it in the project.
Right, which is perfectly within the purview of what's, what's, what state law allows.
Yeah, actually, I, I mean, I, I agree with, you know, you, I think everybody's making some really good points here. Conditions of approval in terms of even framing. What, what's included, who, you know, what, what authority that exists under? Like all those make a lot of sense. I'm just looking at, I just happened to type in conditions or even conditions of approval. It's a hundred and fifty areas within our title ten. And the very first one talks about conditions of approval. And then it says the use of land and or structures shall comply with any applicable conditions of approval imposed. By any previously granted land use or other approval. Um, I almost feel like it could, it, there's, there's a, there's a reasonable opportunity for it to fit within the parameters. Of, of either the beginning portions, which talk about article three, kind of in a general term. Terminology and then how that, that then encompasses not necessarily one use. Or even one land area, but is all inclusive to any of those, uh, those parameters. So I think there's. There's definitely a lot to be, to be said there. I was, I was thinking about that when I. So Commissioner Lotus, it's good that you brought that up, cause it's, there is this all inclusive piece to that where it, it. Does need to be kind of specified and teased out, um, and not just specific to one. Maybe permit that's being issued. So, yeah. I just noticed something that I wanted to bring up to the commission. Uh, and I know it's, it's going backwards here in terms of our use chart. But be mindful that there is actually a chapter in our code that talks about timeshare facility regulations.
Oh, I have seen that, that's right.
So just be mindful of that. I know we're talking about removing it. We should definitely take a look at that section. I don't want to go into the detail of it, but just be mindful of that.
Maybe a separate item.
Yeah, seeing that now, it's making me think that, that it's not just as simple as removing that there.
We should, we should make note.
Anyway, and getting back to the, to the.
Another topic.
Just write that one down.
Yeah, there it is, chapter seven in title ten.
I, I don't believe there are any actually existing timeshares in the city, so.
I did, I, I don't think so either, but, uh.
I would concur, but that doesn't necessarily mean that.
Yeah, it won't come.
It couldn't, yeah.
They were just so popular there in the, in the nineties.
In resorts, in destinations, which is what we are.
What we are, yeah. Okay, thanks for mentioning that, Lucas.
Yeah, it's interesting, ten seven dot six oh one. Says all timeshare units shall be subject to the payment of the transient occupancy tax. Now, I wonder how that would be enforced, just hypothetically, since. You're talking about. The resident being a part owner of the property. And how do you put a price on it that you apply the transient occupancy tax to?
I'm not, I don't have an answer for that.
It's more, it's more complicated. But I agree with you, nine two, uh, nine dash two point zero six should be moved. To title ten. And that's what we wanted to look at tonight, not how to change it, but do we move it or not?
That's good.
But there's more to it. It's not just a simply, you know, timeshare. It's, there's a whole chapter dedicated to it.
Right, right, yuck. Okay, um, so you got the sense of the commission on that, on those two pieces? Let's move on to, uh, to item four. And that is tentative agendas. Lucas?
Yep, pulling it up right now. So, March seventeenth, lot land adjustment at four, four thousand four twenty. Uh, Arundel access, that one. I know I've said that I think it's coming, I think it's coming. But every time that I think it's coming, there's been some stuff that's come up, so, um, we're addressing, well. I've asked the applicant to address some of those concerns, um, so we're working through that right now.
Meeting or two back, you, you mentioned there were several projects in the hopper. None of which were complete, uh, submissions yet. That's where we still are, I guess.
Yeah, I'm, I'm diligently working in the background on several of those projects right now. I can't put them on the agenda yet because I haven't even received a, a complete application at this point, so. But they're definitely, they're definitely out in, in the land and they're, they are submitted. That's why I was able to provide those to you as a part of that list.
All right. Any other questions for Lucas on that? Then let's go to item five. Commission member reports. I have one to do on the MAC meeting. But, uh, do any other commissioners have comments on any subject whatsoever? That you'd like to, uh, tell us about right now?
Well, I have, I have a question, but you can make your report. I just have a question on. I did email Lucas today, um, a question on the tree ordinance and how it's applied to existing. To the trimming or cutting or topping of, of pretty big eucalyptus trees. To be abstract about it.
The, so, I can, I can come back with some responses on that. Let me just, let me do a little research on that piece, cause I. I know that that's currently going on right now. I just need to understand the history and how it's at today.
Okay, yeah, I think there's policy considerations and it may be worthy of even putting it on the agenda as a, as a topic of. Um, discussion for policy on the part of the planning commission.
We have, we have two species or. genera of protected trees right now. We have mature trees. But I thought I had seen somewhere that eucalyptus trees were considered an invasive species. And planting of same is discouraged or not encouraged or something.
Right.
But I'm not sure in a general hypothetical sense what that means. When, when you wanna, when you wanna trim one. Um, you know, with oaks and zicomores, if you stay with branches smaller than four inch diameter, you can prune and, and do other things to the tree without, without a tree permit.
I, I.
But beyond that, where are we? I guess.
I agree, it's probably complicated, um, and not to say that we shouldn't have a program for encouraging removal of eucalyptus trees, but that's, that would be all a part of that conversation, I think, but.
Yeah, I, I would reserve it for that conversation. I don't have a problem putting something like that on the agenda where we're talking about.
Really, it's really a complicated thing and I, and I, I think like Commissioner Nolan was saying a couple of weeks ago, that it seems like it seems like something about interpretation or policy and of the tree ordinance may have changed at some point over the last five years. I don't know.
Certainly seems worth a discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
That's.
So in your copious free time, maybe you could bring that back, Lucas.
Well, we'll squeeze that in.
Anybody else have something you wanna share? Not at the moment, okay.
I do.
Well, Lucas does.
Oh, Lucas does, great.
I wanted to take this opportunity to invite the commission once again to the workshop that's taking place a week from tonight.
That's right.
Six, six to eight. Um, just give you a heads up, there's been, we have a little 50, 50 individuals that have signed up for the event.
They did.
As, as of, um, as of earlier today. So if you haven't signed up, I encourage you to, you will absolutely know what your role is as residents and as, as commissioners, so.
Okay. There's a link on the city website.
You're gonna have to attend the meeting to, to, to attend the workshop.
Sign up, but, okay.
I, I can't remember if I signed up or not. I think I got an email about it, but I don't know where that might be. Is there a link on the website to sign up?
Yes, there's a link on the website. Um, it's ohi-city slash GP, um, update. So go to that, go to that website. You can, you can get logged in, signed up. Um, I will be sending another reminder at the end of this week to, to the commissions, reminding them to encourage them to sign up. You're not required to, encouraged to, but you wanna, this is your opportunity really with the update. Um, Commissioner Lotis has been a part of, of these in the, in the past, I, I believe, um, working in local government, so. You don't do these very often. This is about once every 25 years or for Ojai's sake, once every 30, 35 years is kind of what we're looking at here. So it hasn't been done for a while. So this is an opportunity to have your voice heard.
Excellent, excellent, okay. Um, the MAC meeting, I think it was yeah, on the eighteenth of February, Thursday, two weeks or so ago. First off, off topic of what I sent to Lucas as a short report. I found it interesting, the, uh, the MAC is five people. They all live outside the city of Ojai. And I'm not sure exactly where in the, in the valley writ large. Uh, except one of them is Joe Westbury, who's my dentist. He has an office down in Oakview. Where the rest of them are, who knows? But the, the, um, administrative staff that attended the meeting, in addition to the five MAC members, uh, were or maybe three people, I'm not sure, from, from County Supervisor Lapierre's office. And one of them, a lady named Maruha, I can't remember her last name right now, she ran the meeting. The chair of the MAC did not, which I thought was kind of unusual.
Oh, that's different. That, I've been to a couple of those meetings and that's not, that is not the way they.
Yeah, I've been to a couple and they were not run like that. Well, maybe they were run like that. Cause I didn't know the people that were all sitting up there at the front at the time. I just knew they were all there. Anyway, so three items of interest, I thought. Uh, first of all, there, there is a new AT&amp;T cell tower, presumably with 5G, but I didn't say, is being considered for hillside placement on private property, first of all, north, north and west of the intersection. No, it's north and east, I'm sorry, of the intersection of Maricopa Highway and Fairview Road. If you know the area, it's well up Maricopa Highway. Uh, you get up past, uh, it, not as far as Bodie's, but you get past the Deer Lodge where Fairview is. Then on the right, you have land that slopes up and it's a lot of large parcels, a lot of orchards and things, but residential area. Uh, on the left, it slopes down to the river bottom. Anyway, they, I have been promised a coverage map of the proposed tower as well as other AT&amp;T towers in the valley. Um, because one of the things that they have to do, they're in, caught in county land, so they have to go to the county planning commission. And it would, I thought it would be interesting to all of us to at least see what AT&amp;T thinks they have in terms of coverage right now. I think the major cell tower that we have in town is down at the Y in the, in the, um, Caltrans maintenance yard. And how well it covers all of the, the, uh, the valley, I don't really know. I do know that in my own home, which is an old home with old lath and plaster walls and stuff like that, the, the cell coverage is not too good inside the building. Uh, outside, it's better. Anyway, as soon as I get a copy, I'll pass it to Lucas and, and he can pass it along to, to everybody else so that you can see. There's no timeline, by the way, yet for Ventura County Public Hearing on the request. Uh, second, their, uh, the, uh, Ventura County staff has agreed with new operators. If any of you ever got mulch over on Old Baldwin Road, there's a facility over there that people used to, if they came and trimmed your trees, they would likely throw it all in a trailer and haul it over there. If they didn't have their own chipper or whatever, they, they'd take all this stuff over to a facility on Old Baldwin Road where they would make it into mulch. Uh, and the county came up with a bunch of new regulations, was what I understand. And the, the old operators could not make a business of it with whatever those new requirements were. There are new operators now and Ventura County staff has agreed with those new operators to work toward reopening what they call Ojai Valley Organics. It's a good place to get mulch if you're looking for mulch. As soon as they get it back open again on Old Baldwin Road off of Highway one fifty near the river. If you head down like you're gonna go over Casitas Pass, before you get to the river, Old Baldwin Road goes off to the right and it's down that way a bit before you, you actually hit the river. The permit, when, when with considerable new conditions, including a finer grind than the previous owner used for mulch. Finer grind mulching machine and establishing of more permanent office and sanitation facilities on site uh, is the direction they're headed with that and no telling how long it will take. They mentioned having gotten a letter from James Vega, uh, on behalf of the city supporting the project. And the state ag commission has been involved. That's the source of a lot of the new requirements. And they're on board, as seems the case with VC staff. So that could be coming back sometime, maybe by summer, I don't know. Um, and then one, one of the MAC commissioners noted that there is a new farmer's market in Ojai, imminently starting, I think, on Wednesdays at the Chaparral Courtyard. This is the, the, uh, open parking space that's behind the landmarked building that we know as Ojai Elementary and the Chaparral Auditorium. And I thought this would require a permit from the city, but it is PL property and the school board owns it. So I still don't know if it requires a new permit, but you might, um, you might wanna wander by there on Wednesdays and see if they've opened yet. Cause they didn't say who was in charge of it or anything. But we may wind up with a Wednesday farmer's market in Ojai as well as the Sunday farmer's market. And that's the end of my report. I thought it was kind of fun.
Thanks for going.
Yeah. And I see we, we do not have a city council liaison present with us this evening. Are there any other topics of interest to any of the council members? I've excuse, excuse me.
Commissioners.
Commissioners.
Tonight.
If not, then I thank you all for your time and, and devotion to trying to get things right here. And, uh, I declare the meeting adjourned at nine oh five. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Night.
See you in a couple of weeks. Oh, no, sooner on Wednesday night, the tenth, next week.
Look forward to see everybody on Wednesday night. You'll hear more. There's lots of.